Oregon for the House Committee on Behavioral Health and Healthcare. We have over 50 people signed up to testify on bills, committee.
I forgot to sign up.
Fifty-one people signed up to testify on bills, committee. So we're going to go in order of the printed agenda. The chair will even keep his remarks on his own bill as brief as possible, all right? And then, honestly, colleagues, if you're not the key person explaining the bill, or if you're not a member of the legislature, we're going to, I'm going to do my best to hold every, try to get as many people up as we can, and we're going to hold people to two minutes, okay? So what I need you to do, especially on the omnibus bills, is say what you like, or if you have a concern, put your concern out there, okay? We're going to do the best we can. The committee is definitely going to go past 6:30.
Dude.
Dude me, okay?
Not for me.
Okay, Travis Nelson.
I got, I got that deadline.
All right, we're here to open a hearing on House Bill 4092. Good afternoon, good evening, colleagues. Vice Chair Goodwin and Nelson, for the record, my name is Rob Nos. I'm the state representative for House District 42, which consists of southeast and a little bit of northeast Portland, and I'm the chair of this august body. I'm here to remind you about a bill that you have already heard about and plan to support. That is House Bill 4092. I've introduced it as one of my personal bills this session. There's been a few changes, so I'm going to endeavor to update you on those things. We have made changes in light of suggestions by the Oregon Health Authority so that we can land the bill in a timely manner, so that we have information that we need for the 2025 session. As you'll recall, the main purpose of the bill is to gather information we need to help streamline the mostly county-based behavioral health system, and then, which then ideally helps us make more informed decisions as lawmakers about the operations of this system. First, the bill focuses, as I mentioned, on the community mental health programs that are established in statutes as system managers of the public health system at our counties. Since the creation of the community mental health programs, we have continued, and I mean we, us, the legislature, have continued to add to their workload. We are going to have three study areas that we hope will arrive in time for the 2025 session. These are the county aid and assist, the civil commitment, and the mobile crisis systems. These three areas are the vital components in the delivery of behavioral healthcare that need some evaluation, and they are serving among some of the most vulnerable people that we have in our state. Ideally, the legislature will get a report from the Oregon Health Authority and these entities about what we could do to make better decisions relating to behavioral health in the 2025 session based on those three topic areas. The rest of the service elements, you'll recall, I put up three slides with 60 different service elements. Okay, very distracting. The rest of the service elements are going to be evaluated and reported on by January of 2026. Secondly, the bill will now, in consultation with the Health Authority and a bunch of behavioral health partners, make recommendations to revisions in the statutes with regard to ORS 414 and ORS 430. ORS 414 pertains to the responsibilities of the coordinated care organizations, while ORS 430 details what counties are tasked with doing with. It has been reported to me by many different entities around this state that these statutes have redundancies and overlapping responsibilities and administrative rules and contract burdens, which is making it difficult for the behavioral health system run by our counties to do its work. Candidly, it's giving them confusing directions, maybe too much to do, and it needs to be sorted out. And we frankly need to hire a smart person to help us evaluate these statutes and, again, get a proper report, hopefully something that we can use in the 2025 session to help along with, by the way, whatever we might envision with the coordinated care organization and what is sort of being nicknamed behind my back, the CCO 3.0 process. I think, as I've regaled you before, I know these topics aren't necessarily exciting. They're not going to solve the behavioral health crisis that we're confronted with right now. We're doing that in another committee, frankly, colleagues, but we do need to have a good evaluation of the things that we're asking these entities to do. We do need a proper evaluation of these statutes that are kind of, as I have referred to behind the back, that junk drawer that you all have in your kitchen where there's stray rubber bands that you're never using, okay, pens that don't work anymore. That is what these sections of statutes have become, and that is what we're going to endeavor to change. That is my testimony. I'm not taking any questions. There are eight people that are going to come up here and testify about why this bill is good and necessary, and I'm going to let them get up here.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee, I guess we get no questions. All right. All right. First up, we've got Commissioner Jessica Vega-Petersen.
Good evening, Chair Nos, Vice Chair Goodwin, Vice Chair Nelson, and members of the committee. For the record, my name is Jessica Vega-Petersen. I am the chair of Multnomah County. I'm grateful to be here today in support of House Bill 4092. Multnomah County focuses on providing services and caring for our most vulnerable neighbors. A large part of that work is done through our community mental health program. With the community mental health program, Multnomah County provides many services, including 24-hour crisis services, mobile outreach, 24-hour phone support, urgent walk-in care, commitment services for individuals who are considered a danger to themselves, services to individuals who are unable to aid in their own defense, and many other services that serve as a safety net for people in crisis. These services are complex, and the number of people who qualify for these services fluctuates over time. Surprisingly, we currently do not have a method for evaluating how much is enough when it comes to funding our public behavioral health system. We need to continually evaluate how the community mental health programs are structured and funded. House Bill 4092 does just that. One example of the urgent need for this information is our work with individuals who are found to be unable to aid and assist in their own defense. When an individual is found unable, the court makes a decision as to whether the person requires a hospital level of care or can receive community restoration. We have all seen the dramatic increase in, at the Oregon State Hospital, but what is less visible is the dramatic increase in the number of people who are receiving restoration in the community. Over the past year, Multnomah County has experienced a quadrupling in the number of individuals we serve, but very unfortunately, no reevaluation of services or funding has happened. House Bill 4092 does two important things to set us up for future success. The first is to require OHA to evaluate community mental health programs around the state and provide a report on how the services are being provided and the cost of the services as required by statute. This will give us the first clear picture of our system and its funding. Secondly, the bill will also create a task force structure to clarify roles and responsibilities and eliminate unnecessary administrative complexity. The task force will drive towards a framework that maximizes patient access, creates portability with accountability for the workforce, and promotes integration. Together, these two actions will help us create a system that works better for the individuals who we are all charged with serving. This is a priority for me and for Multnomah County, and I'm glad for the opportunity to support our work towards better evaluation and a better system overall, because this is a bill that will improve the work of community mental health programs, not just in Multnomah County, but throughout the entire state. Thank you so much for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, Madam Chair, thank you for being here.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I'm going to call up the next three witnesses. Cheryl Ramirez, Amy Baker, and Ann Ford. Is Amy here?
She's online.
She's online. Okay, hi, Amy. Okay, we'll get to you after we get the two that are here in person, okay? I do need to kind of keep you guys to about two minutes. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Chair Nos, Vice Chairs Goodwin and Nelson, members of the committee. My name is Cheryl Ramirez, and I'm the executive director of the Association of Oregon Community Mental Health Programs, representing community mental health programs, or CMHPs, who manage and provide a wide behavioral health service array for their communities, and many of these, these services are very much dependent on state general funding. I'm here to testify in support of House Bill 4092. In addition to the aid and assist community restoration, case loads that Commissioner Vega-Petersen described very well, that have increased without commensurate funding, CMHPs also have expanded expectations for civil commitment services and draft rules and end the 2024 County Financial Assistance Agreement without a formal analysis of the cost to deliver those services. This also applies to crisis services. If we continue to do this, we are setting up CMHPs and other public behavioral health system providers to fail, as we will never be able to meet the contractual or community expectations of this work. We would like to move away from the single service element cost estimates we have done throughout the years to advocate for investments and instead implement a statewide systematic cost analysis in partnership with the Oregon Health Authority to move toward equitable funding of the required services provided by CMHPs and their subcontractors. So I'm not going to go over the amendment. Nos already did that, but AOCMHP supports that amendment to really focus first on aid and assist, crisis services, and civil commitment, because those are the services that have expanded greatly in the last year or two. I just want to speak for a few minutes, or no, a few seconds, on the administrative burden portion of the bill. AOCMHP is also supportive of the forthcoming amendment to convene a community behavioral health group to address statutory and rule revisions that will alleviate the immense administrative burden on public behavioral health system agencies and individual clinicians. We believe strongly that it is essential to convene a group representing all public behavioral health system partners and stakeholders to arrive at consensus on recommendations affecting system structure, roles, and responsibilities. Holding those we serve and our workforce is the highest priorities. Thanks for the opportunity to testify in support of House Bill 4092.
You do critical work. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Chair Nos, members of the committee. My name is Ann Ford. I am testifying today in support of House Bill 4092. I have worked in Oregon's publicly funded healthcare system for over 20 years in various capacities. First as a clinical provider, then as the corporate compliance officer to community mental health program, and now as the director of compliance for the state's largest CCO, Health Share of Oregon. Our state's current behavioral health system lacks flexibility, doesn't support clinical decision-making, and simply hasn't provided high-quality outcomes. A recent report released by the OHA indicates that Oregon needs about 3,000 more residential beds in order to meet current needs. And to make sure we use these beds effectively, we need a system that is ready and able to respond. Over the past 20 years, I've repeatedly seen the addition of new regulations develop without the benefit of a cohesive and overarching behavioral health strategy. We need a formalized process to hold OHA, the CCOs, and the counties to the local mental health authority agreement for making it just as easy to enter treatment as it is to get fentanyl. This legislation will improve many system touchpoints, including entry assessments that delay patient access to care for hours, providers who spend more than half of their time on administrative tasks that do not benefit patients, and duplicative community planning that leads to systemic confusion and waste. With clarified roles and responsibilities of each system partner, we can use our behavioral health workforce to its fullest potential. Contained within my testimony is an attachment that details the goals and expectations of this bill. Although fixes to this complex system will be difficult and time-consuming, they remain achievable within the timeframes and structure provided. I urge you to support this bill and move us closer to a more flexible, accountable system with the capacity to meet Oregon's needs. Thank you.
Ms. Ford, that's our goal. Okay, can I get Heather Jeffries, Chris Bonoff, and Rick Blackwell up, please?
Chair Nos, were you going to have Amy Baker?
I was. Amy, I'm so sorry. Go ahead. I'll get you, I'll let them get up, and then you go ahead and give your testimony, please.
Great. Thank you, Chair Nos and members of the committee. I appreciate this opportunity to speak. My name is Amy Baker, and I'm the executive director for Clotset Behavioral Healthcare, and I am expressing my full support for House Bill 4092. I think your local behavioral health safety net system deserves a thoughtful and financially sound process of evaluating, like, exactly what it is that, that we need to do in order to better serve our communities. I think the historic sausage-making of our budgets is no longer adequate, probably not anything y'all want to see, and I, and I think that, I think that we will all be more satisfied if, if we have a really transparent process around what's expected of us and how we're funded for that. As it relates to the administrative burden, I think there's some estimate nationally that around 30% of the healthcare spend is on administrative burden. I'm just going to say, for behavioral health, I think it's much higher than that, and we're losing our workforce because of it. In fact, our behavioral health system is being crushed under the administrative burden. And so what that looks like is that we have a workforce that is leaving the field, they're going to private practice, they don't, they don't want to work in this field anymore. And the way that our clients experience it is, is barriers to care. And it's complex, it's happened slowly over time. There isn't a single person in the state of Oregon who understands what all of the various requirements are that show up in contract rule, contracts, administrative rule, and, and other systems like that. So I had up here mentor who said to me, Amy, it takes 15 minutes to get a hit of fentanyl. It's cheap, it's fast, and you can get loaded really quick, but it takes days and sometimes weeks to get into treatment, and that's not right. How are we going to get people if we can't get them in as quickly as they can get fentanyl? So it has a real effect on our client population, and I believe this study group can help address that so that we don't keep going into the, in the direction of adding layers. Thank you for your, thank you for your time and allowing me to testify.
Amy, thanks for your work. It was really nice to visit you a couple of years ago. Chris?
You're always welcome.
Yep. Chris, I'll go ahead and go to you, take your two minutes, and then we'll go to the witnesses that are here in front of me.
Great, thank you, Chair Nos, members of the committee. I'm Chris Bonoff. I'm with the state chapter of the National Alliance of Mental Illness, NAMI, Oregon. I just want to touch on the statutory side, because my colleagues are going to talk about administrative burdens. The hardest work from NAMI's perspective is going to be revisiting our statutes. You have to think, there's, there's a reason counties are in charge of everything. Before we had health insurance parity, before we had Medicaid expansion, nobody had coverage. The only place where this responsibility could lie are with our counties, because they looked after our old population, and yet they're responsible for everything with a proviso subject to the availability of funds. Suffice it to say, there's never been enough funds to do what we want to do. Let's advance now to today. Oregon has one of the most sweeping and progressive parity laws in the nation when it comes to coverage in commercial health insurance. We have expanded Medicaid, but back in 2011, when we did, when we created CCOs, we did not revisit what should be, who should be responsible for what. So we layered the CCO statutes on top of our community mental health statutes, and basically you have entities that are responsible for the same thing, fighting for the same dollars. So we, and we have never really had a broad discussion, too, as to how does commercial insurance play into that. Today, in commercial insurance, you still can't get to the services we know that are effective, that you can if you're on the Oregon Health Plan, that are underfunded in large part because they can't do the book of business of commercial health insurance to underwrite their care. What's most important from NAMI's perspective is looking at these statutes finally after 13 years, getting them down to who's responsible for what, and then using the study on cost to really look at those functions that counties ought to do, such as mobile crisis, such as civil commitment, such as aid and assist, so that we can come back to you the next long session with hopefully a package to say, change statutes here, align responsibilities there, hold people accountable over here, and this is the funding that it's going to take in the public side to actually do what the public side ought to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, whichever one of you would like to go first?
I'll go first. Chair Nos, Vice Chair Goodwin, and Nelson, and members of the committee. For the record, I'm Rick Blackwell. I'm the director of Oregon Government Relations for Pacific Source. I'm here for Pacific Source Community Solutions. We're pleased to be able to support House Bill 4092. Also pleased that the amendments really captured the essence of what we've, what we wanted to see in the bill, which is making sure that, you know, that there's a selection of a neutral facilitator that will, will help us all, and if you see who's all testifying in front of you, we don't hardly agree on anything. But we're here before you today, expressing support for the space that we'd like you to create, so we can have those conversations. We think that will yield improvements to access to care, and then just make sure that we're also being good shepherds of state resources. So that's all I really had, Mr. Chair, but thanks. Happy to take any questions later.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Chair Nos, Vice Chairs Goodwin and Nelson, and members of the committee. My name is Heather Jeffress. I'm the executive director of the Oregon Council for Behavioral Health. OCBH is the statewide association of providers serving individuals living with the chronic disease of addiction and mental illness. It is likely that a behavioral health provider in your district is a member of the Oregon Council for Behavioral Health. I'm here today, just like the witnesses prior to me, and I am honored to do, work with them every day on this issue, and I totally agree with Rick. We may not agree about a lot of things, but we all, from our seats, agree on this, the movement of this piece of legislation, HB 4092. And I am here to then again strongly support HB 4092, including both the sections regarding the county financial assistance agreements and the opportunity to develop recommendations to reduce the administrative burden that you've heard spoken about so eloquently here today. Oregon Council for Behavioral Health, as mentioned, has, to talk about that part of developing a team and a place and a consultant to really do that, has been asked to assist in partnering with all of the partners that you've seen here today and with our Oregon Health Authority, and we are happy to take on that work as we continue to move the system forward to increase equitable access for all Oregonians. We have partnered rigorously with OHA in the past, and we have been very successful in many different types of opportunities and projects with them, and we are dedicated to the success of this work for our members and for all of the other partners that you've seen here today, who's provided testimony in support of this piece of legislation. For over four years, we've been continuously working on administrative burden, gathering surveys, data, information, many of which, as you have heard in different previous hearings and testimony, to move forward the outstanding investments that have been moved forward through the legislature in the last few years that have made an impact in recruiting workforce, expanding capacity, and we know from recent reports that the work is only just beginning, and we have more ahead of us, but we have an opportunity for a plan and success with this legislation, so thank you. So we really do believe that this bill is the biggest bang for your buck, and we are all here to do it together, and we really appreciate and support your advocacy and support for this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, committee and public, I don't think we have anybody else signed up to testify on this bill. Let's see, okay, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on House Bill 4082, or is it 92? 92, 4092, and open the public hearing on House Bill 4010. I'm going to, so, committee, as you know, there's a variety of topics in this bill. When you're, when you come forward to testify, again, keeping it two minutes, tell us what part of the bill you're interested in, and either what you like or what you have concern about, so that the committee can hear that, and we can discern what it is that we need to understand and know. Two people that I believe are here in the room are Jennifer McAlvery and Lisa Sandoval, so if they would please come forward, and then Chad Baker and Colleen Mirman and Melissa Brewster, if you would please stand by, I will call you after we hear from these witnesses. Whichever one of you wants to go first.
Thank you.
Just let me know your name and what part of the bill you're interested in.
Chair Nos, Vice Chairs Goodwin and Nelson, members of the committee. My name is Dr. Lisa Sandoval. I'm a pharmacist with 20 years of experience serving patients in the Columbia River Gorge in hospital retail and ambulatory settings. I represent one community health, a federally qualified health center with seven clinics serving 32,000 Oregonians. My testimony is in support of House Bill 4010, Section 3. I have two points to convey. First, permitting that drug manufacturers to mandate single-contract restrictions has forced our clinic to reduce patient services. 340B revenue grant and grants currently support 32% of our clinic system operating budget. In January alone of 2024, we saw a 59% reduction in one of our 340B revenue streams. This is entirely attributable to single-contract restrictions. This translates to a revenue loss of $36,000 in a single month, equivalent to 56 fewer patients receiving our care in January alone. Challenged with accelerating restrictions, we forecast this trend to worsen. My second point is that utilizing the 340B program for drug purchases keeps Oregonian dollars in Oregon. When a patient or covered entity pays the full retail price for a medication, it's the patient who bears the financial burden. Where does this money go? Directly from our local economies, and more importantly, our patients, to pharmaceutical manufacturers. However, the directional flow of money is reversed in a 340B transaction, regardless of where the revenue capture occurs. With 340B, the difference between the wholesale drug price and the 340B price is injected into our local economy, kickstarting expanded patient care. Often, my job is to stand up and battle on behalf of people who are not always in a position to continue the struggle on their own. Tonight, I respectfully remind this committee that we share the same purpose, as this is your role, too. By passing House Bill 4010, you stand for struggling Oregonians by eliminating absurd barriers to medication access placed by self-serving pharmaceutical manufacturers and retaining covered entity access to federally legitimized dollars. Thank you.
That's very clear. And in two minutes. Go ahead.
Hi, Chair Nos, Vice Chairs Nelson and Goodwin, and members of the committee. I'm Jennifer McElravy, Director of Pharmacy at Neighborhood Health Center, or NHC as we call ourselves. I'm here tonight in support of House Bill 4010, Section 3. NHC is a federally qualified health center providing comprehensive, primary behavioral pharmacy and oral healthcare to about 22,000 Oregonians across Washington and Clackamas Counties. 50% of our patients are low-income, with 30% living below the poverty limit. Since mid-2020, pharmaceutical manufacturers have refused to ship 340 drugs, 340B drugs to health center contract pharmacies.
Since when?
Since mid-2020.
Okay.
Okay. NHC has experienced about a $2 million loss in 340B revenue annually, which has hampered our ability to reinvest in care for some of the most underserved Oregonians. More importantly, these contract pharmacy restrictions have decreased access to essential medications for patients who need them the most. Since we have 52 contract pharmacies and only one in-house pharmacy, these manufacturer restrictions mean a patient in Canby or Milwaukee may be required to travel all the way out to our in-house pharmacy in Tigard to access an essential medication, since they are no longer able to access it at a contract pharmacy close to their house. Many of our patients have barriers to transportation, meaning decreasing medication access can be the difference between taking or not taking their prescription. This could result in a trip to the emergency room and increased costs for Oregon taxpayers. House Bill 4010, Section 3, will protect patient access to life-saving medications. Sometimes that means providing our patients cards to use at our contract pharmacies that allows them to pay a dramatically reduced cost for their 340B prescriptions. We believe holding pharmaceutical manufacturers accountable is a more appropriate, is more appropriate rather than putting this burden on taxpayers. Please support our policy to protect access to healthcare in communities across Oregon. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you both for your testimony. It was very clear and illustrative of the challenge that we're dealing with, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Chad Baker, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Take your two minutes, please.
Awesome. Good evening, Chair Nos and members of the committee. For the record, my name is Chad Baker. I am the senior vice president of government relations at Flavor RX. I am here today to testify in favor of House Bill 4010, Section 2. Flavor RX supplies over 300 pharmacies in Oregon and an additional 37,000 pharmacies across the country with medication flavoring systems to improve palatability and adherence to children's medications like amoxicillin, tamiflu, and clindamycin. I appreciate the opportunity to address this committee in support of Section 2 of HB 4010, which will allow pharmacies in Oregon to continue the practice of flavoring children's medications without unnecessary and overreaching regulation. Pharmacists in Oregon have been flavoring children's medications for decades. Flavoring is one of the most effective tools pharmacists have at their disposal to help children take their medicine. Mary Poppins almost got it right when she said just a spoonful of sugar helps the medicine go down. In this case, Oregon's pharmacists are adding sugar-free, dye-free, inert flavorings that do indeed help the medicine go down. As I mentioned earlier, over 300 pharmacies in Oregon provide flavoring to their patients. Those pharmacies have flavored, by our estimation, roughly 2 million children's medications over the past two decades. There have been zero reported cases of harm in those 20-plus years. The flavors Oregon's pharmacies use are safe, inert, and tested to ensure that the only impact flavorings have on medications is to improve their taste. The need for Section 2 in House Bill 4010 comes from a change in Oregon pharmacy regulations as a result of the adoption of the newest USP standard. USP, known as the United States Pharmacopeia, is a nonprofit organization that sets pharmacy standards. These are voluntary and not required as part of federal or state law. USP holds an academic view that any changes to drugs, including flavoring, should be treated as compounding, which requires a complex set of regulations to implement and is costly. It's a perspective that fails to account USP holds an academic view that any changes to drugs, including flavoring, should be treated as compounding, which requires a complex set of regulations to implement and is costly. It's a perspective that fails to account for the real-world impact of pharmacies and the patients they serve. Most states have adopted language similar to that found in HB 4010. You can find a map on OLS that shows where each state currently falls on this topic. Only California and Washington subject flavoring to USP-level compounding regulations. California being the most recent to change their policy towards flavoring in November of last year has been an unmitigated disaster. They went from 3,000 pharmacies providing the flavoring service to patients to less than 50 overnight, a 99.5% decline in access to this trusted pharmacy service. If the same were to happen in Oregon, those 300 pharmacies that provide flavoring now would dwindle down to three or less. Access to a service that so many parents in Oregon have come to rely on to help their children get better would be completely wiped out without the provision found here in HB 4010. That is why I urge you to support its passage. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Baker, I thought your testimony was very clear. I'll let you go over a little bit, but I thought it was helpful to the committee to hear why this is in the bill, so thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you.
Colleen Mirman, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Just fine. Please introduce yourself for the record, and try to keep to two minutes.
Chairman Nos, Vice Chairs Nelson and Goodwin, and committee members, I'm Colleen Myman, a National Policy Advisor to Federally Qualified Health Centers, or FQHCs, and I am here to support House Bill 4010, Section 3. In Oregon, FQHCs care for almost half a million medically underserved people, 87% of whom are low-income, 16% uninsured. And FQHCs provide them with primary dental, behavioral, and pharmaceutical services regardless of their ability to pay. Oregon's FQHC Association has met with many of you or your staff to discuss the 340B program and welcomes follow-up discussions. For the sake of time, I will skip a lengthy review of the program and simply say that it requires drug manufacturers to offer discounted prices to safety net providers. Despite Pharma's claims, 340B is not about FQHCs earning profits. Rather, 340B savings are absolutely essential to FQHCs' ability to keep their doors open and support the services their patients need. FQHCs are required by law and regulation to invest every penny of 340B savings into expanding access for underserved populations. Thus, when Pharma decides unilaterally to limit FQHCs' access to contract pharmacies, it's the medically underserved patients who suffer, as you've already heard. In response, around 20 states have introduced bills requiring Pharma to ship 340B drugs to contract pharmacies, and Louisiana and Arkansas have already enacted such laws largely on unanimous votes. These states saw through Pharma's arguments as follows. Number one, Pharma claims that 340B has deviated from its mission of helping underserved patients. When every penny of Pharma's, of FQHCs' 340B savings are used to expand access for underserved patients, 87% whom are low-income, how can that statement possibly be true? Number two, Pharma wants states to look the other way while their lawsuits over the federal law grind their way through the court systems. While Pharma may have the time and the pockets to wait that process out, but our medically underserved patients don't have that. Number three, Pharma has made two constitutional arguments for why states cannot legislate around 340B. When they sued over the Arkansas law, their first argument was struck down in the district court, and the second was struck down by the Supreme Court. Number four, and finally, Pharma claims there is little evidence that patients have benefited from contract pharmacies. Clearly, they have not considered how contract pharmacies expand access for patients who live in remote areas, have transportation challenges, can't get to a pharmacy during normal business hours, or those whose FQHCs can't afford to run their own pharmacies.
Ms. Mirman, I got to cut you off.
I'm closing.
You did a very good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Melissa Brewster, are you online?
I am online, yes.
All right. Dan Rackman and Josh Free, if you would, Free, if you would please come forward and wait at the dais, and then, go ahead, Ms. Brewster.
Thank you. Chair Nos, Vice Chairs Nelson and Goodwin, and members of the committee, my name is Melissa Brewster, and I am the Director of Pharmacy at Mosaic Community Health. I'm here tonight in support of House Bill 4010, Section 3. Mosaic is a federally qualified health center providing comprehensive, primary care, behavioral health, dental care, addiction treatment, and pharmacy services. We operate 16 clinics in central Oregon that serve over 30,000 lives. Over 60% of our patients live just at or below the federal poverty level. We serve primarily Medicaid and Medicare patients of all age ranges from pediatrics to seniors. At Mosaic, it's our mission to care for the underserved regardless of whether our patients have the ability to pay for them, and we're able to do this through federal grants and through the 340B program, which accounts for around 9% of our total budget. We are mandated to take every dollar saved in the 340B program and give it back directly to our patients. This means that we're able to provide medications and healthcare to our patients at little to no cost. Since 2020, we have seen pharmaceutical manufacturers make concerted efforts to erode the 340B program by opting out of contract pharmacy arrangements. This means our clinic is only able to receive funding from the 340B program when patients visit our in-house pharmacy, meaning when our rural patients can't drive back to the clinic for every refill, we no longer receive the revenue that may have been covering their co-pays. Instead, these dollars have contributed to Pharma's recent record profits, which total over $1.3 trillion in 2022. Since the beginning of these contract pharmacy restrictions, Mosaic has lost over $3.7 million in 340B savings, savings that goes directly towards affordable healthcare for our patients. When we keep the 340B dollar, it meaningfully changes Oregonians' lives. We track and are able to show, per federal requirements, that these dollars fund free insulin and vaccines for our seniors, free COVID treatments for those who are sick, free medical care for the working poor and for families who struggle every day. There are no such requirements for when Pharma has that dollar. We ask you to hold Pharma accountable for their participation in 340B and to support us in providing healthy and thriving communities in Oregon. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Brewster, thank you so much for your testimony. Mr. Rackman, please go ahead.
Good afternoon, Chair Nos and members of the committee. My name is Dan Rackham. I'm a pharmacist and Chief Pharmacy Officer for Samaritan Health Services. I want to thank you for your service on this committee and its impact to the health of Oregonians and the opportunity to testify in favor of HB 4010, specifically Section 3. Samaritan is an integrated regional healthcare system, serving primarily Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln Counties. Our mission is building healthier communities together. I've had the honor of working in this organization for over 20 years, helping to build healthier communities together. Our savings from the 340B Drug Discount Program is crucial to our ability to provide healthcare services to our patients. We service a high proportion of the underserved and most vulnerable uninsured and underinsured patients, which is why we qualify for the 340B program. The purpose of the program is to enable covered entities to stretch scarce federal resources as far as possible, reaching more eligible patients, providing more comprehensive services. Since 2020, we've experienced these manufacturer restrictions on 340B to our contract pharmacies. For Samaritan, this has resulted in our cost for drugs increasing. These should be drugs that we buy at a discounted rate, making medicine more affordable to our patients. I estimate there's been over $30 million that has gone towards purchasing these drugs that should be discounted at 340B prices lost from our health system. Instead, the prices have dramatically increased due to the 340B restrictions. This is real money that we could have spent providing comprehensive services to a greater number of patients in the communities that we serve. We utilize our 340B savings to develop a medication assistance program, which has connected patients with over 24 million in financial assistance programs last year alone. It's helped us fund pharmacists and technicians in our cancer center and rheumatology departments to improve patient access and ensure more thorough patient monitoring. We've opened retail pharmacies on the OSU campus and in rural Sweet Home in the last year in effort to provide more comprehensive services and medication access to our patients. I urge you to support 4010, and specifically the prohibition on manufacturers from restricting 340B savings to, from contract pharmacies. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right. People have to ask you questions at the hall. Go ahead.
Chair Nos, members of the committee, thank you for allowing me to speak briefly in support of Section 3 of House Bill 4010 around 340B contract pharmacy, which you've already heard quite a bit about this evening. So, my name's Josh Free. I'm a pharmacist, past president of the Oregon State Pharmacy Association, Chair of the Oregon Pharmacy Coalition. I've been heavily involved in the 340B world for some time. I work as an independent consultant. I see a broad swath of the 340B program with our Oregon safety net providers and lots of others nationally, so maybe I have a little different perspective. These safety net providers are struggling. They are critical to our healthcare infrastructure here in Oregon, and passage of House Bill 4010 would directly support them at no cost to taxpayers. I won't repeat some of the things you've already heard, but let me just say that drug makers have been very effective in portraying this program as controversial. I would tell you, it is not controversial. Critics will tell you, will tell you, the program has grown substantially, and this is true, in part because our overall drug costs have grown substantially. The biggest growth in the 340B program came with passage of the Affordable Care Act 15 years ago, and that, as you may know, drug manufacturers overwhelmingly supported and with good reason, with access to many more paying customers for their products. Critics will say the program is rife with fraud and duplicate discounts. This is simply not true. HERSA has compliance expectations, and they audit and enforce those. More to the point of House Bill 4010, critics may say that contract pharmacy arrangements, which drug makers have blocked or added their own arbitrary restrictions to, were never intended in the law. This is not true. Even in the early '90s, when the program began, network limitations prevented patients from using certain pharmacies, and not all 340B-covered entities even had their own pharmacy. So, those who crafted the law would tell you that they felt contract pharmacy was obvious, and that's why they didn't include it in the, in the federal law. House Bill 4010 simply reinforces existing federal law by saying that drug makers may not impose their own arbitrary restrictions on contract pharmacy relationships in Oregon. These relationships, I would tell you, are also not controversial. It's simply the covered entity outsourcing a little piece of the drug distribution, which is often necessary. They pay a fee to the pharmacy to do that. Of course they do. The pharmacy has to be paid for their service as well. The covered entity would bear that cost otherwise. These contract pharmacy relationships are necessary for our Oregon safety net healthcare providers to access the benefit they are entitled to under the 340B program. As you've heard, we wouldn't be the first to do this. This has survived court challenges in other parts of the country. I encourage you to support House Bill 4010 and thereby supporting our struggling safety net healthcare providers here in Oregon. Thank you.
All right. I'm hoping that there's a David Garvey, an Alyssa Gifford, and a Spencer, Luke Spencer, or maybe it's Spencer Luke, I'm not sure, online and ready to testify and take their two minutes. David, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Even though I just said your name, introduce yourself for the record, and tell us what part of the bill you're interested in, and try to keep it to two minutes, please.
Will do. Thank you. Chair Nos, Vice Chairs Goodwin and Nelson, and members of the committee, my name is Dr. David Glab, and I am speaking in support of House Bill 4010, specifically Sections 12 and 13 dealing with tax credits. I own and operate the Grand Tramadolicure, which is one of the larger eye-health, vision clinics in northeastern Oregon. We serve the communities of the brand, Union County and the surrounding areas. I employ 13 staff members and three doctors with living wage jobs and benefits. We see hundreds of patients per week, and we could use some more help out here. Our three doctors have been booked out for several months, with patients driving as far as two to three hours away to be seen. Attracting new optometrists to fill this need is extraordinarily difficult, with only one new graduate for every four job openings in optometry nationwide. To compete with more populated areas and acquiring physicians, rural communities like mine rely upon financial incentives like tax credits and student loan forgiveness. But to function as intended, these incentives must be easily accessible. The current requirement to have a hospital affiliation is an unnecessary barrier to many optometrists in less populated areas. The credentialing process is arduous. It can take months or even years for small rural hospitals to establish criteria for new providers, and they often have little or no motivation to do so. It took me multiple attempts over several years of working with hospital administrators to become the first optometrist with hospital consulting privileges in Union County, and three years later, I remain the only one. In summary, please support House Bill 4010, specifically the subsections on tax credits, which removes the requirement for optometric physicians to maintain hospital consulting privileges in order to access financial incentives for rural practice. Thanks for your consideration.
David, thank you for your testimony. I'm sure you know there's an optometrist on our committee, and then, one of the members of the committee helps run an optometry practice, so you got to.
She's the optometrist.
Yeah. You got a sympathetic ear.
I love it.
Two sympathetic ears. Okay. Four. Four. Five. Okay. I feel really good about your chances, David. Thank you for being here.
Your famous, David.
Alyssa Gifford, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead and take, introduce yourself, please, and take your two minutes.
Thank you. Chair Nos, Vice Chairs Nelson and Goodwin, and members of the committee, for the record, my name is Alyssa Gifford. I'm a PA who has worked in inpatient infectious disease, family medicine, emergency medicine, and currently working in skilled rehab and geriatrics. I currently have the privilege of serving as the President for the Oregon Society of PAs, and I'm happy to be here to, today in support for House Bill 4010, specifically starting at Sections 15 and all the rest of the provisions, which will update the PA title from Physician Assistant to Physician Associate. At the onset, I want to be clear that nothing in this language changed the scope of practice for any provider. It merely updates the title of PA profession, for more appropriately describes the care that's provided by PAs. After several years' process, which involved significant research and feedback from PAs and patients across the country, our national association, the American Academy of PAs, determined that there was a confusion about the title Physician Assistant when compared to the role and the breadth of the medical care delivered by the profession. Accordingly, a comprehensive assessment was completed to identify a title that reflects our profession and ultimately determines that Physician Associate was a more appropriate title, given our education and training. To date, our national association has updated the name to the American Academy of Physician Associates, and the Oregon chapter voted this summer overwhelmingly in support of title change and to update our organization's name to Oregon Society of Physician Associates. Now it is an appropriate time to update Oregon statute to reflect these changes as well. Personally, I believe the Physician Associate title more distinctly articulates the role and responsibilities of PAs in continuing and delivering quality healthcare while reaffirming the commitment to a team-based patient care. PAs value their place in the healthcare team, as well as their longstanding relationship with our other provider colleagues. The truth is, we do more than just assist, and our title should reflect that. I urge your support of House Bill 4010 and the language to update the PA title in Oregon statute, and I'm happy to answer questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Luke Spencer, are you here? Or Spencer Luke?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Just fine.
Great. Chair Nos, thank you, and members of the committee, I appreciate the opportunity to testify in support of House Bill 4010. My name is Dr. Spencer Luke. I own and operate Apple Eye Care in Union County in northeast Oregon. We, we employ 15 staff members. There are three doctors at my clinic, and we see hundreds of patients a week as well. And I'm here, I won't echo everything that Dr. Glab already said. He did a great job at summarizing what we're after and what we're in support of in this bill. I will just add that in my clinic, at this very moment, actually, we are recruiting an optometrist, and as he said, it's extremely difficult, and any, any incentive that we can give them is so helpful to get the providers that we need to continue the care that we have been providing for many years in the rural areas in this state. And I have a business partner who's, in fact, delaying retirement because we have a hard time finding good help that will be willing to come and help us with the patient load that has us booked out so far. So, I encourage you to, as Dr. Glab said, to vote in favor of removal of this section that requires hospital consulting privileges and makes it difficult for us to access these tax credits that are so helpful in recruiting. And appreciate your attention and the opportunity to talk.
Dr. Luke, thank you very much for your testimony. Troy Druker and Courtney Dresser, if you would please come to the dais and be ready. Jennifer Zanin, are you there?
I am.
Please take your two minutes, introduce yourself, and tell us what part of the bill you're interested in and why. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Jennifer Zanin, if you would go first, please.
Chair Nos, Vice Chairs Goodwin and Nelson, members of the committee, my name is Jennifer Zanin. I serve as the Director of Supply Chain and Compliance for Pharmacy Services at OHSU. We support Section 3 of House Bill 410, which prohibits drug manufacturers from denying or restricting access to 340B discounted drugs at contract pharmacies. This will ensure drug companies fulfill their obligations under the 340B statute and support access for the most vulnerable Oregonians across the state to the medications they need. As a safety net, and 28% around disproportionate share hospital, we do participate in this discount drug program. The savings we achieve in this program allows us to stretch our resources to meet the needs of our Medicaid population and expand access to additional pharmacy services, as well as providing around 40 as providing around $417 million in uncompensated care and $34 million in charity care. This program has run successfully for over three decades, and this program was designed to ensure that drug companies do their part to serve patients most in need. This has been just recently that these restrictions have been put in place, and it's restricting the extended pharmacy networks that OHSU has put in place to serve their patients across Oregon, pardon me. OHSU has 50% of patients reside outside the Portland metro area, and we serve thousands of Oregonians every year who live in every one of Oregon's 36 counties. So again, in support of Section 3, House Bill 4010. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zanin. Go ahead, Courtney Dresser.
You bet. Chair Noes, my name is Courtney Dresser, and the Vice President of Government Relations for the Oregon Medical Association. I'm here on House Bill 4010, Sections 6 and 7. As you might recall, last year, we brought forward, along with coalition partners, a bill around having healthcare insurance cover and provide reimbursement for healthcare interpreters that are used by practitioners. That bill got kind of muddled up and didn't move very much further than this nice committee here. So we have brought back a sliver of this conversation in Sections 6 and 7. And what this would do was allow healthcare providers and healthcare payers to negotiate around interpreter services. It is not a mandate to coverage. It is not a mandate for reimbursement. It's a mandate to talk, if they choose to talk, about healthcare interpreters and what that cost is to the providers and if the healthcare insurance companies can help with that reimbursement. Again, this is a sliver of a problem that we need to solve, but it is a piece, and we hope to see it move forward, and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Druker.
Mr. Chair, Vice Chairs Nelson and Goodwin, I'm Troy Duker, the Legislative Director for the Hospital Association of Oregon. I'm pleased to come before you tonight in support of Section 3 of House Bill 4010. I'm also pleased to be joined by a very large chorus of voices in support of Section 3 as well. The language in the bill came about because drug manufacturers have taken advantage of ambiguity in current federal law to the detriment of our patients and 340B-covered entities, including Oregon's hospitals. As drafted in Section 3, a manufacturer of prescription drugs may not deny or restrict access by a contract pharmacy for any 340B-covered entity. This legislation is vital to protecting the integrity of the 340B drug pricing program and the value it provides to Oregonians. 340B-eligible hospitals are the safety net for their communities. The program allows hospitals to stretch limited federal resources to reduce the price of outpatient pharmaceuticals, for patients, and expand health services to the communities they serve. Hospitals use 340B savings to provide, for example, free care for uninsured patients, to offer free vaccines, provide free mental health services, and implement medication management, as well as community health programs. In order to expand the reach of the 340B program, HERSA allows 340B participants to contract with outside pharmacies, as you've heard already, to dispense drugs to their eligible patients. Contract pharmacies are an extension of the 340B-covered entities and provide patients access to their prescribed drug treatments at their local community pharmacy or through the mail. For hospitals, these arrangements allow them to ensure that their patients can access the drugs when they need them, especially as patients rely more heavily on specialty drugs, many of which are in limited distribution. Mr. Chair Committee, I urge your support for Section 3 in House Bill 4010. Thank you.
Ms. Druker, thank you for your testimony. Robert Pavian, are you here with us online? You are?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes. Would you please introduce yourself for the record and take your two minutes, and tell us what part of the bill you're interested in?
Dr. Robert Pavian, I'm with the Pioneer Institute, and I thank you for having me. I am neutral on this bill with regards to the contract pharmacies, and I want to provide some data and landscape of what the contract pharmacy situation looks like in Oregon. So Pioneer Institute, last year, developed a tool, which is transparent and available on their website, that anyone can go look at the state that they're interested in and see the distribution of contract pharmacies and where their locations are, the geo-locations. In fact, we've done a geomapping based on state legislative and senate districts, and we've also disclosed how much charitable care each contract pharmacy provides. All of the data comes from the Health Resources and Services Administration, as well as the Rand Corporation. So just some data for you. Number one, there's been a lot of discussions about contract pharmacies, about their ability to serve patients. Well, a quarter of the contract, more than a quarter of the contract pharmacies that work with covered entities within Oregon are located outside the state. Of the top five hospitals, which OHS Center, Oregon Health Sciences Center is, about 43% of them are outside the state of Oregon, including 44% of those contract pharmacies for Oregon Health Sciences Center. The other thing that is interesting from the data is that majority of these contract pharmacies are in affluent neighborhoods. If you look at the geomapping that we've done based on legislative districts, about half of these contract pharmacies are not in poor neighborhoods. They're basically in affluent neighborhoods that really are not serving the poor patients. The other important thing is, when you pass a law like this, what you're doing is really protecting for-profit chain drugstores or PBMs pharmacies. In Oregon, the largest provider of contract pharmacy is Walgreens. It's the second or the first largest chain drugstore. So what I ask you to do, if before you pass anything, go look at the data and ask the tough questions of why so many pharmacies are outside the state of Oregon, including states like South Carolina, Texas, Florida, Hawaii. Why do you need so many contract pharmacies outside the state of Oregon? Why is the second-largest chain drugstore the largest provider and not the community pharmacies that are supporting communities that are in the poor neighborhoods? And finally, why are these pharmacies located in affluent neighborhoods and not the neighborhoods that they're supposed to be serving these poor patients? And all of this information is publicly available. It's transparent. It's available on the Pioneer website. You can go look at it, and you can compare the data to the Oregon data to the other states. One last thing.
I need to make it quick.
Oregon Health Services Center, there's been a lot of discussion about that. They provide less charity as a percentage of their revenue than the average of the state, and they're about 100% less charity care than the overall average in the country. All of this data is available.
I'm going to cut you off. I suspect that the OHSU will have something to say about that, but maybe another time. Okay. I'd like to call Jessica Adamson, Marianne Cooper, and Rick Blackwell to the dais, please. I know they're here. Okay, we'll go from Jessica to Marianne to Rick, since Rick's been up here already.
All right. Thank you. Chair Noes, members of the committee, for the record, Jessica Adamson here today on behalf of Providence. We support many of the components of this bill, including Sections 3 and 2 and a variety of others. Here to register some concern about Sections 6 and 7, we appreciate our partners at the Oregon Medical Association and their effort to try and make accessibility to healthcare interpreters easier in this state. However, we're concerned that the attempt to bring this language back as a sliver actually potentially brings some problems with it. When we talked about this bill during the long session, we raised concerns about high deductible health plans and how we have to impose cost sharing on members who have those plans. This language forces a conversation, potentially a mandate, through this language that would impose cost sharing and doesn't explicitly exclude cost sharing in the language, and we're concerned about that and what that could mean for folks that frankly should not have to pay out-of-pocket for healthcare interpretation. That should be a base service that's provided. We also are concerned that the way that this could be read is implying only to individual health plans, and we don't think that that's the intent, but the language is written in a way that's a little strange. And frankly, we're very concerned at Providence about setting expectations for providers that may or may not be met. To say that this is only requiring a conversation means that we're going to be back here in a year having a conversation about whether or not that conversation was successful. We really believe at its heart we can have these conversations without this legislation passing. More importantly, this needs to be part of the overall administrative expense included in contracts. And so with that, we would encourage you to pull this section of the bill.
Okay. Thank you for your testimony. Ms. Cooper.
Thank you. Chair Noes, members of the committee, my name is Marianne Cooper, and I am the Oregon Director of Public Affairs and Government Relations. It can be a health solution, which, as you know, operates Regent's Blue Cross Blue Shield of Oregon. We also have concerns about Sections 6 to 7 of House Bill 4010, as we've heard, would require health plans to cover the cost of interpretation services. I do want to emphasize, we had great interim conversations. We value the work of Representative Reynolds and the OMA to engage with us during the interim to try to find a solution here. But Jessica mentioned some of the operational challenges that we'll face in implementing the bill. I will say the high deductible health plan continues to be a significant one. The state can't waive deductible for high deductible health plans, and they are not exempt from this bill as it's written right now. We're not actually sure interpretation services could even count toward a member deductible if they were to pay for them out of their own pocket because they aren't a direct medical cost. And then finally, and I'll just put a little finer point on one of the points that Jessica raised, we do think there's a significant precedent in terms of asking insurers to cover this cost, which would otherwise, you know, been part of administrative costs of doing business. We've been required, health plans and doctors have been required since the enactment of the ACA, to cover interpretation services, and we always view that as part of our broader contract negotiations, similar to assuring a facility is ADA compliant, or that the equipment on site meets the needs of the particular demographic that the provider's office is servicing. And so, again, we think it's part of what we've been negotiating in rates, but even if it were not, the way that the bill is drafted, it is ambiguous at best as to whether it is encouraging a conversation or enacting a coverage requirement. And we at least hope we can move past the ambiguity and continue conversations in the interim to try to land something with a little more clarity and a little more likelihood of solving the issue without creating significant secondary issues.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Blackwell.
Chair Noes, Vice Chairs Goodwin and Nelson, and members of the committee, for the record, again, I'm Rick Blackwell with Pacific Source, here for Pacific Source Health Plans. We too are here to oppose Section 7 of the bill. We don't like to, I mean, this is a very, I think we all want our members to understand the care that they're receiving, but the way that this provision is landing in the insurance code is going to cause a lot of ripples for us to deal with. We don't have a lot of guidance as to how these negotiations are going to go. I just want to focus on kind of one window in the process of the questions we're going to ask, which is, in a couple minutes, credentialing and network adequacy, right? So if we cover the services of an interpreter, an insurance network, in the way we would a provider, we will effectively have to credential interpreters in order to be on the network. Does a good-faith negotiation allow us to choose not to bring certain interpreters into the network or not? Can we negotiate for our own list of in-network interpreters to be the ones that are on call? Do we have to have single-use case agreements every time there's a different interpreter that needs to provide services? Since 2021, Oregon has limited the use of telemedicine to construct networks of providers, and so if we have a language that's not commonly spoken, will we be able to meet our network adequacy standards if we can't find an interpreter that's within this area? Or even with the factor-based approach that's currently in law? So I think I 100% agree with my colleagues. I also think that there's a lot of complexity that this can bring. If we bring someone a rock and the person doesn't like that rock, we will be back in front of you having to talk about this all over again. So with that, I will close, and if there's any questions, thank you.
All right. Your testimony was very clear. Thank you both, all of you, all three of you. All right. Brian Warren, if you're here, Fon Berry, if you're here, please come forward. I'm going to call on Kip Snyder and then Lisa Bosnovick. I'm sure I messed that up. Kip, are you here?
I am. How's the audio?
It's very good.
All right. Chairman Noes, members of the committee, thanks for having me. I'm Kip Snyder. I'm National Vice President of State Policy for Pharmaceutical Research and Manufacturers of America, or PHRMA, representing the country's leading innovative biopharmaceutical research companies. I'll note at the outset, so PHRMA, we and our member companies, we strongly support the origins and the goals of the 340B program. It was intended to help low-income, vulnerable patients access medications they couldn't otherwise afford. That said, we have to oppose the 340B provisions that are in Section 3 of the bill. Let me explain why. The 340B program of today is clearly broken. It's morphed into something that it was never intended to be. Its growth has spiraled out of control. You look at the growth in the program, it looks like a hockey stick. It's become the second-largest federal drug program after Medicare Part D, but there's no guarantee that patients are actually benefiting from the discounts. And worse yet, it's really doing a disservice to the patients and to the entire system. It's essentially become an ATM for pharmacy benefit managers and corporate pharmacy interests. That is why we at PHRMA, 100%, are on the record supporting reform, working as part of a coalition, but the reforms have to come in the US Congress at the federal level. Previous witness talked about the problem with contract pharmacies essentially being all over the place, very, very large percentages of these contract pharmacy networks are not even anywhere close to the service areas of the covered entities, and that's part of the problem that we have here. There's an unintended consequence here, as we've had vertical integration in the supply chain with insurance companies commonly owned under corporate structures with PBMs and chain pharmacies. This is producing a windfall for PBMs and chain pharmacies because so many, over half the pharmacies in the country now are chain pharmacies. This is acting really as an accelerant for a federal program that has been exploited and abused to some extent by some, not all, but some stakeholders, and these manufacturer discounts that average about 59% across the program are, in most instances, not going back to the patients that they're intended to serve, and they're going to line the pockets of corporate stakeholders. Our data show that about 1.4% of prescriptions in the program are having discounts passed back to patients. So what we have is we really have a broken, out-of-control program. It's established and regulated by the federal government. It desperately needs reform. There was recently, here in Washington, there was recently a legislative discussion draft that was released by Congressional Workgroup.
Snyder, I let you go a little bit longer than I've let other folks go because we haven't had much opposition to this, and I know you're an expert on this. If you would Google me and make sure that you, my office, has your phone number and your email, I will follow up with some of the questions that I have. Okay? Thank you very much.
I'll be happy to have a conversation, Mr. Kevin.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Lisa Bosnovick, are you here?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, just fine. Please introduce yourself for the record, and please share your testimony.
Sure. Good afternoon, Chair Noes, and Vice Chairs Goodwin and Nelson, and members of the committee. For the record, I'm Lisa Bosnovick, Executive Director of the Oregon Bioscience Association. We're a trade organization here in Oregon for the bioscience industry, and I'm here today in opposition to Section 3 of HB 4010. I'll try not to be duplicative, but this bill says that manufacturers participating in the 340B program must sell to every contract pharmacy and cannot implement programs intended to ensure compliance with federal law, and this is the part of the bill that we oppose. Under the federal 340B statute, manufacturers cannot be subject to duplicate discounts, which happens when a 340B drug would also be subject to a Medicaid rebate. Pursuant to federal guidance, OHA has implemented various policies to prevent this, but it still happens. Additionally, the 340B statute prohibits discounted drugs from being diverted from the program and dispensed to non-eligible patients. Contract pharmacies are not named in the 340B statute, but they've been allowed under federal guidance since early on. In 2010, the Health Resources and Services Administration, HRSA, changed its guidance to allow covered entities to have multiple contract pharmacies. This has resulted in explosive growth of contract pharmacies. You've heard that already today, and since that time, contract pharmacy arrangements in the program have grown by about 5,000%. Unfortunately, contract pharmacies are also more likely to have compliance problems, both with duplicate discounts and diversion. HRSA's main enforcement mechanism is through semi-random audits, and nearly three-fourths of those audits find compliance problems. However, since contract pharmacies, because they aren't named in the federal statute, HRSA doesn't even... HRSI doesn't even cite their non-compliance. We find it very problematic that contract pharmacies aren't being enforced because they aren't named in the statute, yet manufacturers would be prohibited by this bill from implementing programs intended to ensure compliance. By precluding manufacturers from implementing programs intended to ensure compliance with the 340B program, this bill threatens the program integrity.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your testimony.
Thanks.
Mr. Warren?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Brian Warren with the Biotechnology Innovation Organization. We're a national trade association for biopharmaceutical companies in Oregon and across the country. Lots been said about the Section 3 of this bill related to 340B tonight. A lot has been said from the FQHCs, and I commend the work they all do in the communities. Our concerns with this, and we do have opposition to this provision, relate to mostly as it relates to the use of contract pharmacies. 340B-covered entities have access to steeply discounted drugs, which they can dispense to patients and receive reimbursement by commercial payers at the full price. So they get a cheap drug, full price, they get to keep the difference. And that's how this program has worked for about 30 years now. However, it's been described as a drug discount program in which most patients do not get drug discounts. This is because, under federal law, the covered entities can keep that 340B revenue to support their operations, and covered entities are an important part of the healthcare infrastructure. But they're not required to pass those discounts on to patients. In fact, a 2022 analysis of 340B claims found that as few as 1.4% of patients actually see the 340B discount when they are receiving drugs. The 340B program has also experienced, as you've heard tonight, exponential growth in recent years, driven almost exclusively by contract pharmacies. The big chain stores realized that there's a lot of profit for them to be made in this program. Over half the 340B profits retained by contract pharmacies are concentrated in just three pharmacy chains. And the Journal of the American Medical Association has found that contract pharmacy growth has been concentrated in affluent, predominantly white neighborhoods. Unfortunately, there's a heightened risk for, as the previous witness just described, duplicate discounts and diversion at contract pharmacies, which are both prohibited under federal law. This is in part because, unlike an in-house pharmacy for a 340B entity where almost all of those patients are going to be eligible, contract pharmacies have hundreds of patients walking through the door, and only a fraction of them are going to be 340B patients. So you do have mistakes that happen. In response to the explosive growth of contract pharmacies and ongoing problems with compliance, as well as inadequate policing by HERSA, some manufacturers have implemented requirements for covered entities that use multiple contract pharmacies intended to ensure compliance with federal law. These 340B integrity programs are the intended target of this bill, which would prohibit any restrictions on shipments of discounted drugs. They are also the subject of litigation in several federal courts.
Sorry, I might have to jump off quickly because I'm...
Okay. Thanks for sharing. We need you to go on mute. Finish, you got three more.
Yeah, my last paragraph, sir. This bill's provisions are part of an effort to inappropriately enshrine a one-sided interpretation of federal law currently being litigated into state statute. Yet the belief that manufacturers have no ability, and should have no ability, to establish standards, and must provide discounted drugs to all contract pharmacies regardless of a history of non-compliance, has been rejected by federal courts. And when evidence exists that these arrangements result in increased rates of illegal duplicate discounts and diversions, it's untenable to preclude manufacturers from implementing any standards. For that reason, we oppose Section 3.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Berry, you're the last.
Chair NOS, members of the committee. For the record, Fon Berry, representing Moda Health. I apologize for being late, but every single device I own is dead, so trying to charge it. So we just wanted to weigh in quickly on Section 7 of the bill. We have concerns about the way that the language is drafted. This language, or requiring coverage for health interpreters, has obviously been something that the committee and the legislature has dealt with on several occasions, but the language this time is a little bit different. Moda actually uses specifically for OAB a contracted interpreter service, and our hope is that we would be able to continue using that service. The way that the language is crafted, it actually creates some confusion about if you're negotiating with the provider directly or the interpreter, it kind of insinuates that you're negotiating with both. And while there is a provision that seems to allow you to contract, it doesn't specifically say that that would cover your requirements. And so I think we could come up with language that would address these issues if the committee is interested, and would be happy to work with you on that.
Okay. Committee, that is everybody that we have signed up for House Bill 4010. I'm going to close the public hearing on House Bill 4010. I'm going to open a public hearing on House Bill 4011. You'll remember that this is the bill that has suggestions for legislation that we believe has a small fiscal impact, and to the extent that these are good ideas, this bill will head down to Ways and Means. I'd like to call Jana Bitten, and Emerson Hamlin, and Krista Kemp to the witness stand. Sorry to limit each of you to two minutes, but that's how it's going.
Try to make this as quick as I can. Good evening, Chair NOS, Vice Chairs Goodwin and Nelson, and members of the committee. Thank you very much for this opportunity to testify for you today. My name is Jana Bitten. I'm the Executive Director of the Oregon Center for Nursing, and I'm here to speak directly to House Bill 4011, Sections 27 and 28. For those of you who are not familiar with the Oregon Center for Nursing, we are a nonprofit organization that was formed more than two decades ago specifically to look at the nursing workforce in our state, to make sure that we have the nurses that we need to support our healthcare, to support our healthcare industry. We can have all the beds that we need in all of our hospitals. We can also have every person in the state being able to have access to insurance, but if you don't have the healthcare workforce to back that up, it's not really necessarily going to matter. We are really grateful. One of the things that we have found in the two decades of research that we have is that it is very, very difficult in the state of Oregon to be able to grow our nursing workforce, especially because right now in Oregon, we have about a 30% acceptance rate of new students that are trying to get into nursing school and that are qualified. That means that we can only, that we turn away about 70% of the people who applied to nursing school, and the biggest reasons why we do that is because of a lack of clinical placements and a lack of faculty. I think that this committee was incredibly wise in the last session when they passed House Bill 3396, that actually addressed and put some investment into those two problems, so we can finally address those things once and for all. One of those things from the House Bill 3396 was a $5 million grant that was going to go through the Oregon Health Authority to the Oregon Center for Nursing to be able to look at nurse faculty at publicly funded Oregon, publicly funded nursing schools. We are still working with the Oregon Health Authority to get under contract so we can actually start the program that we intend to be able to use with that funding. In the testimony that I've given you, you have a little bit more information about what we are planning to do with that particular funding, and also to let you know that that funding, since it's so specific to publicly funded organizations, that there is a whole section of nurse faculty in the privately funded that are not included, and that's what House Bill 411 would be inclusive of those. So thank you very much for this opportunity, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. Chair NOS, Vice Chairs Goodwin and Nelson, and members of the committee. For the record, my name is Emerson Hamlin, representing the Oregon Nurses Association. ONA is supportive of four components included in House Bill 411, all stemming from our members' belief that every Oregonian deserves to access the healthcare they need when they need it. Our members are very supportive of eliminating cost sharing for cervical cancer examinations, expanding coverage for continuous glucose monitors, providing funding for the Mental Health and Addiction Certification Board for recruitment and retention of behavioral health professionals, and the establishment of the Harm Reduction Clearinghouse within OHA. A full version of my testimony can be found on all this. Thank you.
Okay. Wow. Thank you. That was sweet and short. All right. Krista Kemp, if you're here, please come to the dais. Pam Pfeiffer, Eric Martin, and Carrie Frederick Miles, are you here?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Martin? Okay, Mr. Martin, why don't you go ahead, and then we'll go Pam, and then we'll go Carrie.
Thank you, Chair NOS. Chair NOS and committee members, my name is Eric Martin. I'm representing the Mental Health and Addiction Certification Board of Oregon in support of HB 411, Section 29. MACBO registers and certifies Oregon's unlicensed behavioral health workforce with over 16,000 members statewide. MACBO supports another year of scholarship funds for the purpose of recruitment and retention of addiction and mental health workers. These funds are used directly to scholarship registration and examination fees. I sent a report to the committee yesterday on the amazing success of the original House Bill 2949 workforce development funds that are now set to expire on June 30th. A portion of those funds enabled MACBO to register 5,191 new addiction and mental health workers. I'm going to repeat myself, because I think it's important to note, we registered, using these funds, 5,191 new addiction and mental health workers. Moreover, just this past year, we, it was, it funded 1,642 addiction and mental health competency examinations. When workers advance in credentialing through competency exams, they are 20.7% more likely to stay in the behavioral health field. With these workforce funds, MACBO also performed significant outreach into communities of color and increased our BIPOC representation 4.6%. Today, 31% of our certified members are persons of color, with 69% being non-Hispanic white. The OHSU gap analysis from 2022 reported that a staggering additional 32,993 behavioral health workers were needed in the state of Oregon. Our prior funding got us 5,191 workers closer to filling that gap. We're hoping to continue this very successful endeavor.
Okay. Mr. Martin, thank you for your testimony. Ms. Pam Pfeiffer, are you there?
Yes.
Please introduce yourself for the record, and please share your testimony.
Thank you, Chair NOS, Vice Chair Goodwin, Vice Chair Nelson, and members of the committee. My name is Dr. Pamela Pfeiffer. I'm Dean of George Fox University's College of Nursing. I'm also here speaking on behalf of the Oregon Alliance of Independent Colleges and Universities and its member institutions. I believe there's letters on record from other alliance schools, so we can be respectful of the time restriction for testimony. I'm here to support House Bill 411, Sections 27 and 28, related to nurse educators. The Retaining and Elevating the Nurse Educator Workforce, or RENEW, initiative at the Oregon Center for Nursing, OCN, is aimed at stabilizing and increasing faculty in Oregon to ultimately grow the number of new students able to attend and complete nursing programs within Oregon to match the demand of the nursing workforce. In 2023, House Bill 3396 established this program with OCN, providing the $5 million in funding to help nursing programs at the state's public education institutions with faculty growth efforts. This is outstanding. We're just looking to make sure that any future money given to the OCN can be used to help all schools it serves, which include Oregon's private nonprofit nursing programs. More than 40% of graduating nursing students come from these private schools and all collaborate on improvements together at the OCN, so we would like future dollars to not be bifurcated. House Bill 411, Sections 27 and 28, would provide expansion of the RENEW program to include nursing programs at Oregon's private nonprofit education institutions, who are already important partners at OCN, and allocate $5 million more for these important efforts. Private nonprofit institutions need to be part of this initiative to meet the increased demand to recruit and retain nurse educators so we can prepare more nurses in Oregon. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Carrie Frederick Miles, are you there?
I'm here.
Please.
Chair NOS.
Go ahead.
Vice Chair Nelson and Goodwin, and members of the committee, my name is Carrie Frederick Miles, and I'm a physician licensed in obstetrics and gynecology. On behalf of myself, my patients, and the 712 practicing OB-GYNs of the Oregon Section of ACOG, we would like to express our support of Sections 1 through 5 in House Bill 411 regarding diagnostic cervical cancer exams. This provision aims to eliminate out-of-pocket costs for medically necessary diagnostic testing for cervical cancer for patients with commercial insurance. Just last year, 140 women in Oregon were diagnosed with cervical cancer. This is an entirely preventable disease if screening programs are diligently followed. One of the provisions of the Affordable Care Act was to make cervical cancer screening, like Pap testing, available to all patients without out-of-pocket costs. When someone has an abnormal result on a Pap test, follow-up testing, generally a biopsy, is needed to determine whether they are, in fact, at high risk for developing cervical cancer and need treatment to prevent that from happening, or whether they're at lower risk and can be monitored without treatment. While patients no longer incur out-of-pocket costs for the initial Pap test, insurance coverage for the follow-up tests is highly variable, and patients often encounter significant costs for both the biopsy itself and associated lab fees. Cervical cancer disproportionately affects women of color and women of lower socioeconomic status, groups who historically already face barriers to health care. The costs associated with testing for cervical abnormalities have a greater impact on these populations, resulting in delays in diagnosis and therefore higher costs associated with eventual treatment. The goal with this provision is to remove any unnecessary barriers to care so that women can get the treatment they need in a timely fashion.
Okay.
This provision is modeled after last session's SB 1041, which removes out-of-pocket costs for diagnostic breast exams. This bill would expand the insurance coverage requirements to include cervical cancer exams.
Okay. Thank you very much. Stella Dantis and Nathaniel Brown, are you there?
Yes.
Good evening.
Hi. Stella Dantis, why don't you go ahead, and then Nathaniel Brown, please follow.
Chair NOS, Vice Chairs Nelson and Goodwin, and members of the committee, my name is Dr. Stella Dantis. I'm a full-time OB-GYN physician here in Oregon and the National President-elect of the American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists ACOG. I'm here to share my support of the provision in House Bill 4011, Sections 1 through 5, for the elimination of out-of-pocket costs for those with commercial insurance needing diagnostic cervical cancer exams. The goal of cervical cancer screening is to identify high-grade precancer cervical lesions to prevent the progression to cervical cancer. High-grade cervical lesions may be treated with excision or other blade of therapy to destroy abnormal cells. Early-stage cervical cancer may be treated with a surgery like a hysterectomy or chemotherapy. However, treatment of precancerous lesions is less invasive than treatment of cancer. With delays in or the absence of follow-up diagnostic tests for abnormal screening, we lose the opportunity for less invasive treatment with more significant morbidity and increased mortality for our patients. While cervical cancer prevention, screening, and treatment are both basic and critical components of comprehensive reproductive healthcare, inadequate cervical cancer screening remains a significant problem in the United States, with persistent health inequities across the entire spectrum of cervical cancer care. We see this when we compare different populations. Example is the overall mortality rate from cervical cancer among African-American women is 10.1 deaths per 100,000 women. This is more than twice the mortality among white women. While several studies show African-American women are screened for cervical cancer at rates similar to those for white women, unfortunately inadequate follow-up after screening is an important contributing factor, leading to disparity in outcomes. Given the burden of cervical cancer incidence and mortality falls disproportionately on racial, ethnic, and sexual, gender minority groups, persons with disabilities, and low-income populations, I cannot express how thankful and proud I am to see Oregon with a bill to help eliminate obstacles to early diagnosis, which would not only benefit all women, but be especially meaningful to our most marginalized patients.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Share my support.
Your testimony was very clear. Okay. Nathaniel Brown?
Good evening, Chair NOS, Vice Chairs Goodwin and Nelson, members of the committee. For the record, my name's Nathaniel Brown, here representing the Northwest Kidney Council. We partner with patient advocates, healthcare professionals, care providers, and researchers to advance kidney care in both Washington and Oregon, and our association is committed to ensuring that all patients with kidney disease receive a high-quality care and treatment that's accessible to all. I'm here tonight in support of the bill as a whole, but specifically, I believe, Section 6, the new requirement that requires an inclusion of continuous glucose monitoring, otherwise known as CGM, for specified recipients of medical assistance. Diabetes is the leading cause of kidney disease throughout the country. Nearly a third of Americans have pre-diabetes, and most people with pre-diabetes don't know that they have it. Of the more than 8,400 Oregonians living with end-stage renal disease, diabetes is a major contributor to the decline in their kidney health. Chronic kidney disease is called... Chronic kidney disease is called the silent disease because most people don't know that they have it. But if it's caught early, there are treatment options that can greatly slow the progression of the disease and prevent the need for dialysis or a kidney transplant. And that's why it's imperative that we provide all Oregonians with the tools they need to manage their diabetes diagnosis. With this bill, Oregon has the opportunity to join the majority of other states in the country in providing CGM coverage for Oregonians who are qualified. Thank you for considering our perspective, and we encourage the committee to support the bill.
Mr. Brown, thank you for your testimony. Carrie Peel Warner and Eric Thorne, are you there?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Carrie, why don't you go ahead and go first, and then Eric, please follow.
Yes, sir.
Two minutes.
Chair Noss, Vice Chairs Goodwin and Nelson, and members of the committee, my name is Carrie Peel Warner. I am the executive director of the Oregon Association of Dental Laboratories, and I'm here to urge your support of the dental laboratory registration provision of House Bill 4011, which starts at Section 8 of the bill. Dental laboratories manufacture crowns and other dental restorations and appliances as prescribed by the dentist for placement in their patients' mouths. In Oregon today, dental laboratories are not required to provide the prescribing dentist with any disclosures unless specifically requested. Even then, the laboratory is only required to specify where a restoration was completed, but not what it is made of or where the components were manufactured. The dental laboratory provisions of this bill establish a simple registration program for dental laboratories to provide added accountability, and it will help assure that every dental laboratory providing restorations to an Oregon dentist also provides the dentist with accurate, detailed material content, point-of origin disclosure information that the dentist needs in order to continue to provide high standard of care for their patients. We've worked with all the industry stakeholders throughout this process of developing this bill. We're currently collaborating with the Health Licensing Office to address some small technical changes that they have requested and that will help them to implement the new registration program more effectively. We encourage your passage of this important bill. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Eric, are you there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Chair Noss and members, on behalf of, I'm Eric Thorne, on behalf of the National Association of Dental Laboratories, what's been said has been well said, and in deference to the committee's busy agenda, we waive our time and stand in support of the bill.
Excellent. Okay, Carissa Kemp, are you there? You just got my vote, sir. Carissa Kemp, are you there?
Yes, I'm there. Chair Noss and committee, my name is Carissa Kemp, and I'm the Director of State Government Affairs of the American Diabetes Association, here to speak about Section 6 of the bill and testify in support of the language included to address access to continuous glucose monitors. For people living with diabetes, continuous glucose monitors, also known as CGMs, provide significant potentially life-changing benefits for diabetes management through the avoidance or delay of serious complications, hospitalizations, and even death. This legislation simply seeks to align Oregon's coverage with CMS and ensure that people with diabetes have positive health outcomes and thrive. Current criteria in Oregon leave CGMs out of reach for many who would stand to benefit from using them. Last April, Medicare released updated guidance based on peer-reviewed clinical evidence. The changes allow a patient diagnosed with diabetes that is insulin-treated or has a history of problematic hypoglycemia to be prescribed a CGM, ultimately recognizing the value of CGMs and helping this population manage their disease. Thus, we have seen other states across the country align with these criteria, and I'm here today to advocate that Oregon do the same. Thank you, and I urge your support.
Okay, thank you very much. Committee, that is everybody that has signed up to testify on House Bill 4011. I am closing the hearing on House Bill 4011. I am opening a hearing on House Bill 4012. This is a bill about white bagging, PBMs, and where drugs will be received or used. Matthew Longren, Bud Pierce, and Mike Millard, are you here? David Cosgrove and Amy Shukoskowsky, please stand by. I don't know which one of you would like to go first?
I'll start.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair Noss and members of the committee. I'd like to congratulate you on your endurance this evening. My name's Michael Millard.
You've got an hour.
I'm the chair of the Oregon Society of Health and Legislative Committee. I'm also a professor emeritus at Pacific University School of Pharmacy. I'm here to indicate OSHP's support for House Bill 4012, specialty provisions in Sections 2, 1, and 2, and also to indicate that we are concerned about Section 3, which limits some of the provisions in Section 2, and we encourage the committee to consider eliminating that language. We also feel that there is more specific language that would be more helpful and directive. I have provided that language in my written testimony and will not burden you with a discussion of it here, but you'll find it in your written materials. I will point out that since 2021, 24 states have started this discussion, and seven states have enacted legislation fully prohibiting these actions. And I have provided a couple states in my written testimony so you can tell that what we propose is not out of the ordinary or different than what has been passed in the other states in the country. White bagging is basically PBM and pharmacy, selecting a specialty pharmacy to provide drugs to a physician or a clinic and sending them to the clinic in advance on an appointment for an infusion drug that the patient cannot administer to themselves. It's called white bagging because those drugs usually show up in a white bag. If I can give you a clumsy metaphor, if you had a hamburger stand and someone came to you and said, "I would pay you to fry it, but you have to use my brother-in-law's meat," I wonder what you would think about that. And that's, as a practicing pharmacist, that's kind of the perspective that we have. A bag comes up, I don't know where it came from, I don't know anything about it, yet I'm supposed to administer it to the patient. And we find that an interesting expectation. We strongly encourage the committee to consider the changes that we have suggested, and what we're really trying to accomplish is to provide the patient and the physician with the choice to pick the drug that is necessary for the patient at the time they arrive for their infusion. So it's really a patient choice kind of thing. And we think as a practitioner who is facing the patient and has the laboratory values on that day and is concerned with the patient's well-being in the moment is really the person that should pick the drug, and we urge the committee's support for this bill. Thank you.
May I let him go over a little bit because I thought he was explaining the bill very well? Thank you very much. All right, gentlemen, who wants to go next?
I'll go next. Hi, Chair Noss, members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to let me speak today. I'm Dr. Matthew Lonergan. I represent Willamette Valley Cancer Institute. We're an independent physician-led practice in Eugene. We have approximately 25 practicing physicians and nine advanced practice providers. The three of us here, myself, David Cosgrove, who is online, and Dr. Bud Pierce, we care for probably between 10,000 and 20,000 new patients every year. We do so in patients' communities at multiple sites located all over the state. We engage in trials, we provide radiation oncology, gynecology oncology, the whole gambit of services that are provided. I won't reiterate, I thought you did a great job of explaining what the issues were. You heard from Dr. Schnadig a couple weeks ago right before the ice storm. The key issues are, white bagging prevents us from having the real-time flexibility to make dose adjustments and change therapies when a patient is in front of us. And the second thing is, there are safety concerns around that. I would not want to fry somebody else's meat. I would not want to look at a vial of Taxol that was purple because it came from a slightly different manufacturer and ask my farm tech who's used to a green vial of a slightly different size and concentration. It creates unnecessary complexity in our supply chain. I know of no system where safety is enhanced by increased administrative burden and increased complexity, and that's our major concern. To be brief, I'm in support of the House Bill 4012, and I'll defer any extra time I have to Dr. Pierce.
Dr. Pierce, welcome.
Chair Noss, thank you, and committee members, thank you. I'm Bud Pierce. This is my 47th year in medicine. I've been with Oregon Specialty Group for 30 years. We started with a handful of employees. We're now at 275 employees, and we'll pay those employees $31.5 million this year in salaries and benefits. We have a huge shortage in labor, including physician labor. I still practice five full days a week, including Newport, Salem, and North Lincoln, and there's never been a greater demand for our services. I'm going to go off talking points, which is dangerous, so we'll see how this goes. When I take my great labs, Bosley and Georgia, to the vet, if they're doing pretty well, the charge is about $100 to $500, I've noticed of late. And if you bring a complex cancer patient to my office for me to see, I get far less to see that patient than my vet gets to see my dogs. And that fee is supposed to cover the facility, it's to cover the medical assistance, the check-in people, the nurse navigators, the triage, the after-hours, like tonight when I get a dozen or so calls, there's no billing or charge for that. So way underwater on what we get paid for E and M. So we've been given a service, which is administration of oncology drugs. And when I started in 1994, the margin was about 30% on drugs, low single digits for us. We don't get 340B pricing, so we have to deal with a single-digit low reimbursement. That does allow us to actually pay for our practice and pay for our employees. If we were to lose that, we wouldn't be viable. We're just not viable, economics, we're not. And so when I was on the IPA board, I remember looking at oncology services in Salem. When patients were treated in our practice, the cost was 30% to 60% less, and the reason it's less is because we get paid a lot less money to take care of patients than when hospitals do it or universities. So for high-quality care that's a lower price and to give doctors the opportunity, it's an increasingly small group, to actually own their business and to be private practitioners and support their communities, I'd ask you to support this bill.
Okay, thank you for very clear testimony, gentlemen. Okay, Amy Shukoskowsky, I'm sure I didn't say that right, and David Cosgrove, are you online?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Amy, I'm sorry, I butchered your name. Why don't you go ahead and go first and take your two minutes, and then we'll hear from Mr. Cosgrove.
Okay. Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee, my name is Amy Shukowsky, and that's how you pronounce it. I serve as the Director of Specialty Pharmacy Services at OHSU. I'm here to testify in support of House Bill 4012. And OHSU is an academic health center, and we're committed every day to improving the health and well-being of Oregonians. We are dedicated to helping providers and patients manage complex medication therapies, which are part of cutting-edge care today. For too many individuals, including patients at OHSU, payer-mandated white bagging, which requires patients to get their necessary medications at a specific pharmacy and then have it sent to and administered at OHSU, creates quality control and chain of custody issues. This can jeopardize the health and safety of patients. We regularly see this practice, and it results in unnecessary risk and delay, and it injects uncertainty into high-stakes medical treatment. There are some examples I don't want to go into because it's late and we run over, I assume because we have so many people testifying, but we have some very expensive medications that have been duplicated and lost because patients didn't know how to store them, they were sent to their home instead of to the home infusion, it was sent to the wrong place. So it's a lot of chaos when it comes to the white bagging. These examples are just a few of the issues. We are ensuring the procurement and storage and administration of these complex and lifesaving drugs to our patients, and having those in our hands from start to finish is imperative to their care. So as currently written, we do support House Bill 4012. Thank you.
Okay, your testimony was very clear, thank you. David Cosgrove.
Yes, good evening, Chair Noss, members of the committee, thanks for the time today. My name is Dr. David Cosgrove. I'm a medical oncologist in Portland, Oregon, part of Compass Oncology, Community Oncology Practice, and I just wanted to echo what my colleagues, Dr. Lonergan, Dr. Pierce, had outlined. We appreciate the flexibility that our current workflow achieves for patients, minimize drug waste, and enhance patient safety in what is a very high-value, low-cost area of care, and I would fully support House Bill 4012 to try and minimize the risk of white bagging for this patient population, and I will defer the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Tom Holt, Elise Brown, and Troy Duker, are you here? I was pretty sure you were. Welcome back. Whoever wants to go first.
Well, pardon me for lobbing this amendment bomb at you all at 15 to 7, but here we are, Chair Noss, members of the committee, Troy Duker, the Hospital Association. I want to share our perspective on House Bill 4012. As introduced, the bill would prohibit white bagging in certain care settings under very narrow circumstances. The bill does not go far enough to protect patient safety and ensure equity. We support the -1 amendments, which were posted earlier to House Bill 4012, which would expand the scope of the prohibition on white bagging to include all care settings and patient treatment needs. If it's a patient safety issue for outpatient clinics, it remains one for inpatient settings as well. White bagging is a patient safety risk. Most drugs subject to insurer white bagging policies are needed to treat extremely sick patients. The quality issues and treatment delays that result from white bagging can be debilitating and even life-threatening for our patients. Ways that white bagging creates risk includes complexity and uncertainty around the drug supply chain, which was mentioned earlier, as well as treatment delays due to changes in clinical needs. White bagging primarily exists to enhance insurer profits. The specialty pharmacies that insurers require providers and patients to use are often owned by or otherwise affiliated with the insurer. This allows insurers to harvest profits at multiple points in the supply chain. Insurers argue that white bagging saves money, but there is little evidence that those savings are passed on to patients. In fact, a study of patients with cancer found that white bagging consistently resulted in higher out-of-pocket costs for those patients. Accusations that hospitals greedily mark up the cost of physician-administered drugs are misplaced. Oregon hospitals are barely breaking even. We had about a 1% margin over the past year, while insurers maintain much higher margins. One analysis found that for the first nine months of 2023, the largest health insurers nationally earn profit margins more than 17 times higher than those of nonprofit hospitals, and our profits are going back to be invested back into our local communities unlike theirs. The narrow prohibition on white bagging in the base bill, House Bill 4012, creates inequities for patients and increases administrative demands on our providers. White bagging is a safety hazard to all patients who need these medications regardless of where they receive their treatment. As introduced, the base bill applies only to patients with chronic, complex, rare, life-threatening medical conditions without specifying how that determination is made, so there's some ambiguity there in that language, and I believe one of the folks who preceded me here tonight mentioned that as well. It applies only to drugs administered in certain outpatient and clinic settings, excluding hospital-inpatient settings, I'm almost there representative, does not apply to PBMs. And while this bill may be a step in the right direction, there's still a little bit of work that we need to do to get there. So take a look at our amendment, we're supportive of the -1, hope to get you all there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Holt.
Chair Noss, members of the committee, for the record, Tom Holt, here this evening on behalf of the Oregon chapter of the National Association of Benefits and Insurance Professionals. Their job is to work with employers, often self-insured employers, on their benefits, and their customers have been hearing or have been calling them about this bill with great concern. As you heard from others earlier, including my colleague to the right, this is largely about money. I'll give you one stat. 2% of the prescriptions are responsible for 50% plus of the costs, and those are specialty drugs. That's what's driven the use of white bagging, to try to squeeze cost out of the system. The trend has been because of white bagging and other practices.
The trend has been, because of white bagging and other practices, to lower the drug cost piece. At a system level, my client believes it's better for us to get to a place where the provider is reimbursed or paid fairly for all the services they provide and not hide that in a drug cost that's less transparent. So for, you know, to the extent there's logistics issues with this, we believe that, you know, those are trending toward getting better and would ask that you take more time on this issue. It's more complex than a February bill should be.
Okay. Ms. Elise Brown.
Yes, indeed, Mr. Chair and Vice Chairs Goodwin and Nelson, Elise Brown for America's Health Insurance Plans. AIP is the national association whose members provide healthcare coverage to hundreds of millions of Americans every day. And we are here in opposition to House Bill 4012. And just picking up from what Mr. Holt said, the impact is, for us, is the affordability equation. 4012 prohibits plans from their ability to require and leverage the use of lower-cost specialty pharmacies. As mentioned, the specialty drug prices tend to be the high-cost drugs that treat complex, chronic medical conditions that frequently require special administration. And they must be administered by the clinician either in the hospital, clinic, provider's office, infusion center, or through a home visit. But the problem is that these drugs, they're already expensive to begin with and can get marked up even more when administered in a hospital or a physician's office. On OLIS, you will see a list of these familiar drugs, and you can see the difference in the price markup from a physician's office and a hospital's office. It's staggering. So I hope you get a chance to look at that. For 10 drugs commonly dispensed through specialty pharmacies, the physician-hospital markup range from $204 to $19,803 over special pharmacy costs. So that's the issue. Again, it's about affordability. I want to jump to safety. There's been some comments made about lack of safety. We're all subject to the same supply chain safety requirements under federal and state licensing requirements, including safe storage, handling, and dispensing of the drugs. In fact, many hospital and physician groups obtain those meds from the same specialty pharmacy that they all claim are unsafe. So I wanted to point that out. This is not a bill that's limited to clinical settings. The -1 amendment makes it a very broad prohibition, including all care settings. So for that reason, we are AIP, and its members, which you'll hear from after me, are all going to be up here and be in opposition to this bill. Thank you.
Okay. The last three witnesses that I have are folks who've seen before this evening, committee. Mary Ann Cooper, Rick Blackwell, and Fawn Barry, please come on back up.
Take it away.
Chair and members of the committee. My name is Mary Ann Cooper, and I'm the Director of Public Affairs and Government Relations at Canby Health Solutions, which operates Regions Blue Cross Blue Shield of Oregon. I would like to note that in keeping with our values as a tax-paying nonprofit, 85% of every premium dollar that we have goes to pay our members' medical claims and expenses. We only use white bagging as a really limited tool. And our objective in those cases where we use it is to get our members access to the same drugs at a lower cost. Creating a state-level prohibition on white bagging will limit one of the only tools that we have to promote affordability and result in higher healthcare costs for Oregonians. We ask if the state is serious about healthcare affordability to oppose 4012, both as drafted in the -1 amendment. We heard a little bit about what specialty drugs are earlier. I'd like to offer some statistics. Recent studies have found that specialty drug launch prices, or just drug launch prices, increased, you've heard me use this stat before, from $2,000 a year in 2008 to $220,000 a year in 2022. So as we're talking about markups, imagine the magnitude of the increase of those markups. Cancer drugs, which are relevant to this bill, have among the highest launch prices with the annual price of a newly-launched cancer drug in the United States averaging $283,000 in 2022, which is a 53% increase from 2017. This trend toward more costly medications is expected to continue. And we, as we've heard, when hospitals and clinics purchase these drugs directly and administer them to patients, they generally include a significant markup on the cost of those drugs. I will note that while proponents claim that the bill is limited to clinical settings, the bill expressly includes clinics affiliated with hospitals and hospital infusion centers, which bill at hospital rates. And then the -1 amendment broadens the bill to all hospital settings. From 2019 to 2021, the cost of a single drug treatment from a hospital costs an average of $8,200 more than if the same therapy was purchased through a specialty pharmacy. Our own data underscores these national trends. Within Regions, hospitals in this state average a markup of 22%, while clinics average 140% markup over the average sales price. This average markup is about 170% when blended across our organization. These trends result in higher costs for patients and higher costs for all of our plan members. As we've heard about, specialty pharmacies prioritize patient safety. They're the same handling, the same drug techniques as when doctors get them. We are aware and very sensitive to concerns around delays in care that can result from white bagging if, for example, a medication, which they can be overnighted, but if something happens in shipping, or if in the oncology space, a dosage needs to be adjusted same day that absolutely happens in rare circumstances, but we acknowledge and understand that it does happen. We, in those cases, would allow the doctor to supplement from their own stock, and we would be very happy with any sort of clarification in law that insurers, that all insurers are following that practice. So again, while it's not a tool we frequently use, it's a really important one. And we think the bigger conversation really should be how we can limit markups in these spaces to promote affordability with drug prices skyrocketing. And white bagging right now is one of the only tools that we have to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Blackwell.
Thank you, Chair and Vice Chairs Goodwin and Nelson. For the record, again, I'm Rick Blackwell. I'm here with Pacific Source Health Plans. Fortunately, we have to appear to oppose House Bill 4012. Also have some concerns about the amendment as well. I want to stress that we are, we're a local not-for-profit. We're not going to make profit, and we're not affiliated with pharmacies or PBMs. So I think we have a different perspective here. I think one of the things I want to start with is, I'm hearing that there's a scoping issue. We've heard a lot from oncology practices about white bagging. The bills, both as written and as amended, cover essentially mostly any clinician-administered drug, which could be some pretty expensive drugs for muscular dystrophy, around $600,000 a dose, Pompe disease, $700,000 a dose, and hemophilia B, which there's a recent drug that came out with a wholesale acquisition cost, or what the manufacturer lists the price as at $3.5 million. So we're dealing with some very expensive drugs here. This bill doesn't take into account the manufacturer's role in the process here. So if a manufacturer considers a drug as a limited distribution drug, there's very few places where that drug can even be obtained. There's only a handful of specialty pharmacies that might actually carry this drug. Those distribution networks are limited by the manufacturer to those single pharmacy contracts when purchased outside of a buy-and-bill setting. So we have limited control of where we can even direct where these are obtained in the first place. So I think the bill has an illusion of choice. The drugs are so specialized that only a handful of pharmacies are going to handle these kinds of drugs. And there may be only one administration site to actually deliver the drug to our member, our patient. We find it unlikely a patient would be able to shop or look for drugs that are this specialized and this limited in distribution. I also want to note the bill limits how we can reimburse through the pharmacy benefit. So I know that the medical benefit might appear less costly to the member in terms of cost share. There are benefits to running things through the pharmacy benefit that are not readily apparent and are really important to preserve. In the cases where we do have the, you know, try to exercise the option to run a, make a, obtain a drug through a specialty pharmacy, the benefit specialty that we use has overnight delivery capabilities. So in those emergency situations, the drugs are easier to obtain. We've established exceptions processes to immediately approve needed drugs in emergent situations. So I think the bottom line I want to leave for the committee is that having the option of arranging for medications helps us to have that conversation about the most cost-effective way to get to member, make sure that our members have the drugs that are available to them. We don't require these as a matter of course. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So it's unusual that, I don't think that this is something that we regularly engage in. So I wonder what we're doing here. Thank you.
Okay. Let's all ponder that. Okay. Ms. Barry, you have the last word on this.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, for the record, Fawn Barry, representing Moda Health. I was going to say that Rick stole my talking points until he inserted that last one, so. I'll try to be brief. For the record, Moda has a program specific to some of these high-cost drugs that are administered in a medical setting, and it's called the Pharmacy Benefit Optimization Program. There are about six drugs that they are running through the system, and they have been able to successfully transition going from 80% of the drugs in the medical setting and billing under the medical benefit to only billing 20% under the medical benefit. And for a consumer, that is huge because the current situation is that if a person gets the drug from a pharmacy benefit, they are only paying a $200 specialty pharmacy copay. If they are getting it under the medical benefit, they have to pay up to 20% of the copay under the medical benefit. So it's a pretty significant challenge for those consumers who are potentially being administered these drugs in the clinical setting. I will end it there. I think my colleague said the rest, and we are happy to answer any questions. I would also say, I think there's a lot of confusion from me, at least, as we're talking about all of these different bills and how they fit together. I think we've heard a lot of different pieces, and you'll hear, I think, more about specialty pharmacies in the next one as well. So I think we just have to be cautious about kind of how we're making different changes as we go forward and what the impact's going to be. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your testimony. Committee, that is the last of the folks that have signed up to testify on House Bill 411. I'm going to close the public hearing on House Bill 411. We're going to have the last public hearing of the evening. We're going to try to get this done by 7:30. House Bill 40012. Rep. Nathanson and Rep. Goodwin, I believe you're leading off on this bill. I'm sorry, House Bill 4149, excuse me. Opening public hearing in House Bill 4149. I'm going to give the two of you about five-ish minutes because I think you have an amendment to your bill that will be important for the audience and people that are paying attention to this topic here. And then we'll endeavor to try to get folks up and be done by 7:30.
Want me to go? I'll do it.
Go ahead.
I'm short, so he saved the best for last.
I did.
Chair and Vice Chair Nelson, distinguished members of the committee. I'm characteristically quiet tonight, I noticed. I'm Christine Goodwin, State Representative for House District 4. So we are here, of course, to support House Bill 4149. Last session was 3013. And the problem we are trying to solve in Oregon is its ever-expanding pharmacy deserts. At the end of the drug chain is the local pharmacy, trying to service our communities with reimbursements too low to cover the cost of purchasing and dispensing the drugs to customers. A growing number of pharmacies have closed, and this year, an estimated 30 to 40% more will close their doors forever. And this is not just an Oregon problem. The urgent healthcare matter is a nationwide problem, and many states are working on passing legislation that will create licensing, transparency, and oversight of the pharmacy benefit managers' business practices. Meanwhile, the supposed partners and friends of the pharmacy industry, the pharmacy benefit managers, are doing very well financially. The PBMs do not want the status quo that works magnificently for them to change. There are many very smart lobbyists in Salem working tirelessly to confuse legislators with junk data falsely warning of huge increases in cost to consumers if we change even the smallest aspect of their coveted business model. Other states have been implementing PBM reforms, including dispensing fee increases to pharmacy reimbursement. And they have not shown an increase in cost to customer. But for the sake of securing accurate data that can be applied to Oregon, the dispensing fee language has been removed from the bill for now. So what this bill will do, and why it is so important, is that it will offer transparency, licensing, and oversight of PBMs by DCBS and will help pharmacies stay in business. It will allow for a fair and impartial third party to arbitrate disputes between PBMs and pharmacies regarding audits and appeals. It will expose the spread pricing, the difference between what the customer pays to the pharmacy and what the PBM charges insurance. So if the patient is paying $7 for Lipitor at the pharmacy, the PBM charges the benefit plan or the insurance 15. So the PBM receives the spread of eight. Of the total claims data, how much, I think what we want to uncover in this is how much did the pharmacy receive from that total contracted reimbursement that was allowed by the benefit plan? We want to examine the MAC pricing as, quote, "the set price." I think it's based on unrealistic bare-bones cost of a drug. Pharmacies are contracted by, or they contract with a primary wholesaler, which there are three big wholesalers in the nation. And once they contract with the wholesaler, they must buy 90% of their drugs from that with both the generic and the brand names. And they do that, they're required to get the best overall cost of goods. The pharmacy is not capable of shopping for the lowest possible price with the secondary and the tertiary wholesalers to buy that one-off, very-low-pricing or short-dated drugs or overstocks. Pharmacies would willingly purchase at the lowest cost possible if that was an option. Hence, the clawbacks that my bill is prohibiting, but we still need the oversight and the licensing to make sure that happens. But so in example, if the PBMs, if pharmacy buys a drug for $10, and the PBM comes back and says, "Golly, you could have gotten that drug for $5, so we're going to clawback five of it from you," even though that's not what the pharmacy was able to purchase that drug for. So to save our critical access in our local independent pharmacies, the current PBM business model that drives pharmacy out of business and creates pharmacy deserts in the rural parts of our state must be examined closely. The complexity of this problem requires a high level of oversight to protect the consumer from increasing drug costs and protect their local access to their trusted neighborhood pharmacy.
Okay. Go ahead, Rep. Nathanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. I'm Nancy Nathanson. I represent House District 13. I'm going to talk faster than usual, blast through a lot of information.
We'll do the best we can.
This bill is about prescription drugs and the mysterious middlemen that most patients, consumers, will never know about, pharmacy benefit managers. There's a lot of talk about high prescription drug costs for sure, but there's a lot more to it. The PBMs reimburse pharmacies less than the cost of the prescription drug and literally only cents, C E N T S, not dollars, for the work of acquiring, processing, and dispensing the prescription to the patient. House Bill 4149 is based on a bill that you heard and passed last year, a bill to change how PBMs are regulated in Oregon. The bill passed in the House 53 to 7, but did not pass in the Senate ultimately. Last year, 35 more pharmacies closed in Canby, Hines, Reed'sport, Redmond, Albany, Aloha, Milton, Freewater, Mount Angel, Medford, and more. Pharmacies contract with PBMs, telling me basically it's take it or leave it. And even if a pharmacy signs what they believe is a contract that they can live with, they may or may not get the reimbursement they contractually agreed to. They need a neutral party for review, and that's why the bill includes an avenue, a legitimate avenue, for appeal and review. This shows pharmacies in 2018 and the beginning of last year before 35 more closed. This slide shows the complexity of the drug supply chain. We'll distribute it to you to look at later. This shows what is called the unknown flow of funds in the drug distribution system. And this slide shows vertical integration that suggests in part where ownership interests and price come together. You can study it later. You can study it later. Not even federal or state regulators can tell you what's going on with prices, fees, and rebates. Where does all the money go from all those deals in the supply chain? And why are pharmacies reimbursed at less than their cost to purchase and deliver the drug to the patient? Since 2023 legislative session, we have had numerous conversations with stakeholders and legislators to be sure we understand the concerns. In the past few months, we have talked with pharmacists, attorneys, people representing healthcare providers and public health officers, PBMs, insurers, cities, and labor unions, and agencies that would be administering the legislation. We have been communicating with Senator Wyden's office, reviewing concerns and approaches to legislation. Senator Wyden's office has encouraged us to press forward here with state legislation. Also, since the last session, the Secretary of State released the audit of the role of pharmacy benefit managers in state expenses for Medicaid. The report points out limited and fragmented regulation of PBMs, lack of price, and other data transparency reporting, and unfair variable reimbursements to community pharmacies. So the bill, this year's bill, based on last year's but with key differences. Licensing is the same as what you saw and voted on last year. Regulation is nearly the same as what you voted on last year, retaining the regulatory policies such as audits, anti-retaliation, no new fees, any willing pharmacy. But it adds some language responding to a PBM request that adds flexibility for auditing when there is a reasonable suspicion of willful misrepresentation, fraud, waste, or abuse. Reimbursement, the bill was written to bring down the cost concerns raised by PBMs and that were a concern for cities, too. It's scaled back by a lot compared to last year's bill, but I'm going to tell you more about that later.
Representative Nathanson, I don't have that much more time to give.
Okay. Transparency is based on the Secretary of State's audit. We are recommending that you consider and pass this bill with the -3 amendment that makes key changes in two areas: ERISA and cost. Unions have asked for their negotiated insurance plans covered under federal law to be exempt. The amendment exempts them entirely. And regarding cost, in all of those conversations, we looked at different ways to reduce or eliminate the concern. But we're frustrated that we are unable to construct a framework where the profitable PBMs absorb the cost of reimbursing pharmacies at a fair rate, simply to match the price they paid. Everything related to new minimum reimbursement is now removed. However, I hope that the Chair will direct a work group to work on costs. And finally, we will be recommending an amendment relating to a technical issue for the Oregon Prescription Drug Program. We need to finish what we started last year. This is for our pharmacies, and it's for our constituents, the patients, and consumers. Thank you.
Madam, Representatives, has your amendment been posted?
We submitted it, a -3 amendment. My legislative sense didn't.
We haven't received an amendment yet.
Oh, dear. Well, it was intended. It was sent, maybe something got misdirected.
Okay.
We will send it.
This is a hotly debated, contentious topic. I feel like you have been trying really, both of you have been trying really hard to figure it out and work with the sides in good faith. Please get the amendment to committee staff as soon as you can so it can be posted, so that people that have thoughts about this have an opportunity to examine it and can get to you all and get to the committee.
Mr. Chair, may I offer a may-a-couple, I actually do have it now posted.
Excellent. Right now. Love this. Okay, right on. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I appreciate your hearing this bill. We are joined by Oregon Nurses Association, Oregon Medical Association, Chronic Disease Coalition, Oregon Society of Health System Pharmacists, and the Oregon Primary Care Association, and others. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to prioritize folks that are here. Mr. Jack Holt and Pat Hubbell, are you both here?
Can you take down the slides?
Thanks for your hanging in here. It is appreciated.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Chair Knows and Vice Chairs Nelson and Goodwin, thank you for allowing me to testify again before this committee. I was here last year. My name is Jack Holt. I'm the president of High School Pharmacy, where the last regional chain left in the state of Oregon. It was a little over a year ago, I reported to this committee the precarious position that pharmacies were in our state. I warned you that if our voice was not heard, then many of us will cease to exist to serve our patients and our friends. Sadness report that in 2023, I had to close two more pharmacies because reimbursements were not adequate to cover the cost of operating those locations. One was in Dallas, Oregon, and the other was in Mount Angel, Oregon, which I've operated for 28 years, and it was the only pharmacy in that city. We are currently struggling in three other cities at this time. Communities in which we are the only pharmacy. Our pleas to the PBMs fall on deaf ears with regards to continued underpayments of claims to owner's audit practices with little recourse in preventing recoupment of dollars on legitimate claims that we filed. We need this legislation enacted in order to establish more transparency, to restore the viability of our community pharmacies, to create equity between pharmacies, and to protect our ability to serve the most vulnerable of our population. The communities that have no pharmacy operating in them is ever increasing and needs to be addressed now. That struggle for the viability of pharmacies in our state is real and is not limited to just a small handful. Many of the larger chains are facing the same issues I'm talking about that small guys are dealing with. Riot Aid is currently under bankruptcy. CVS, Walgreens, they're closing thousands of stores throughout the United States, including our state of Oregon. It's not because they don't want to help people, it's because the PBMs continue to ratchet down the payments for the drugs and services that the pharmacies provide. As Representative Nathanson pointed out, the Oregon Secretary of State performed an audit on PBMs, and here are just a couple of their conclusions. OHA estimates out of the monthly capitated payments sent to CCOs, 14% of that money is earmarked for outpatient prescription drugs. In 2023, this accounted for $1.072 billion. However, those same CCOs reported spending only $767 million of that dollars on prescription drug benefits. That means $305 million, which was meant to go to community pharmacies, was diverted either for other health services or for additional profits. This money was meant to build community health infrastructure, but it is not given to the pharmacies that needed to survive. HB 4141 does not provide all the protections and the fixes to the problems that pharmacies need, but be that as it may, it does provide some of the solutions that will help us survive.
Right on.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you.
All right. My name is Pat Hubbell. I am an owner of Brooklyn Pharmacy in Portland, Oregon. Thank you for having me here today. I am in support of this House Bill 4149. Pharmacy is suffering. Independent pharmacy, my pharmacy, is suffering in this situation here, so we do need your help in this. I want to kind of briefly talk about a couple things here. Representative Tran, I believe you have two independent pharmacies in your area. Representative Yunker, I believe you have one pharmacy, independent pharmacy, in your area. And Representative Knows, I am your pharmacy in your area.
Yes, I know.
And Representative Dill, I think, has one pharmacy. And Representative Goodwin, I think you're the winner. I think you have four independent pharmacies in your area. So the other point is, is that I would love to open up a pharmacy in Representative Nelson's area, but I can't do it. There's just no feasible way to do that, to serve your community. I would love to be there and provide superior pharmaceutical care, but it's just not possible. Pharmacy closures are happening, and I am the recipient of those patients, and it's a burden. It's an unfortunate burden that I accept those patients, fill those prescriptions at a loss, okay? And, you know, I have to, I have to really give a lot of credit to Representative Goodwin and Nathanson. They have really pointed out some facts that I can show you and reverberate the actual facts that's happening there. It's true. I live it, I breathe it every day. It's not, it's there. The other part is, I just want to briefly say, 4149 is the first step that we have to take to continue this battle to be viable. So I want to make sure we know that, yes, I'm in support of this, but we have a lot of work to do, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ann Murray, are you there?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Please introduce yourself for the record and try to keep to two minutes.
Yes. Thank you. Chair Knows and members of the Health Committee, we need your help. Pharmacies are closing in Oregon. We've lost 36 pharmacies in '23 and two more in January. My name is Ann Murray, and my husband John and I are pharmacists, and on Murray's drag of family business, serving Marl Gillum Wheeler County since 1959. Our three stores in Hepner-Konrad and Boardman serve a coverage area of about 3,000 square miles. There are no pharmacies in Wheeler and Shorma Counties. We offer free delivery to many towns without pharmacies, including Fossil, Lexington, Ione, Arlington, and Umatilla. I've been coming to testify in PBM legislation since 2013, when we passed some of the most progressive legislation in the nation. Unfortunately, the PBMs found ways around it, and we couldn't enforce it. This bill will force them to be properly licensed and subject to the laws you pass. PBMs have swelled, merged, and vertically integrated, causing pharmacy deserts. The top three PBMs control 80% of pharmacy transactions in the U.S. For example, Cigna owns Express Scripts. CVS merged with Aetna, they own Caremark. United owns Optum. On Forbes, the highest paid CEO list, I found annual salaries ranging from $28 million to $69 million per year for Caremark, Aetna, and Cigna. What happens when so many pharmacies close in Oregon? The remaining stores become overwhelmed with increased numbers of prescriptions with extremely long wait times for new prescriptions, and stores can't afford to add more staff due to losing money on most RXs. The work environment for pharmacy staff becomes stressful and dangerous. Pharmacy must have a safe work environment to prevent deadly errors. With the current infection rates this winter of pneumonia, flu, COVID, pink eye, or strep throat, the public is having to wait not hours but days to have their medication filled. The PBMs say, "Send it to the mail-order pharmacies that they own," but for these conditions, how is that supposed to work? The PBMs are sucking the literal lifeblood out of our pharmacy delivery system with below-cost reimbursement and DIR fees, which is visible now not just in rural areas where I'm from, but also in urban ones as well. The public gets it. They are frustrated. They feel it. They are learning what PBMs are now. Please protect their access by passing our bipartisan bill of 4149 and help us in 2025 with a more comprehensive bill to stop the bleeding before more pharmacies close, more people end up in the hospital as we deal with the consequences when people can't get their medication. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Scott Winkles, Tom Holt, Josh Ballack, please come forward. In theory, you're neutral. Mr. Holt, I'm going to let Mr. Winkles and Mr. Ballack go first because they haven't talked to us yet. I hope that's okay.
For the record, Scott Winkles, representing the League of Oregon Cities, and I am, in fact, neutral on the bill based on the presentation you heard earlier from Representatives Nathanson and Goodwin. I appreciate that this is a far cry from the position we had in the last session on the 3013. I want to thank both Representative Goodwin and Representative Nathanson for addressing our concerns with this bill. The League has no concern with the licensing or other regulatory aspects of this bill. Our concern was the impacts this would have on our plan, our employers, and the fiscal health of our cities. We believe the amendment, as described and just posted, addresses those.
Josh Ballack, All Care Health. We want to thank the bill sponsors for making the changes that were outlined and really kind of addressing some of these costs. All Care very much values independent and critical access pharmacies all throughout the region. During COVID, they were an essential part of making sure that people were getting services, particularly underserved populations. When Buy Mart closed, they really stepped up in our community and filled that void. What would be most ideal is that the Oregon Health Authority actually sustainably fund a rates increase to make sure that these small rural pharmacies are getting fully funded. But All Care is not waiting for the ideal. We're actually, we recognize the role that pharmacies provide in our communities and unilaterally have increased our rates for critical access pharmacies in our region. But this act of helping our pharmacies is having a disproportionate financial implications. Not only are we incurring the cost of increase, but this change, we're also looking at getting our future rates cut by the Oregon Health Authority. OHA does what's known as a market check against CCOs. If the CCOs don't meet whatever the OHA prescription drug purchasing plan pays, that's a statewide program, then according to a CCO contract, our CCO's future rates are cut. We feel CCOs should not be financially penalized or disincentivized for actually stepping in to help our independent and critical access pharmacies. Our recommendation would be that we pause the market check until we can factor in increased rates for these types of pharmacies, and then going forward, we factor in that increased rate in future rates going forward, making it sustainable, and really helping these critical providers in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair Knows, members of the committee, I'm still Tom Holt, but I'm here this time on behalf of Prime Therapeutics, which is the PBM that services regions across Blue Shield Plans. I signed in as neutral just as a signal of thanks to Representative Goodwin and Representative Nathanson for simplifying a very complicated bill. And we know that there has to be continuing conversation about this issue going through the interim, and I would guess that we'll be here again next session with another PBM bill. And, you know, we are, in terms of, you know, conceptually, what we discussed in the last 24 hours with the sponsors about what will be in the amendments, I think we're very close, and we're evaluating the language that, you know, the words that became available to stakeholders earlier today. And I think, I anticipate we may come back with some technical suggestions, but we do appreciate where we are on this bill at this point.
Okay. Elise Brown, Kelsey Wilson, and Fon Barry. And to members of the public that have been hanging in there, these are going to be the last three. I've already extended this way beyond what I was supposed to do. I'm probably in trouble. Maybe it'll get me taken off of chair. You can only hope. Okay.
Chair Knows and Vice Chairs, Elise Brown for America's Health Insurance Plans, again. I'm just going to say quickly, appreciate what we just heard, the presentation by Representative Goodwin and Representative Nathanson, and, you know, acknowledging two of the biggest issues for AIP and AIP members, and that is the ERISA preemption and taking out that self-insured plan language. So we're good on that. And then the other big one is taking away that mandatory minimum dispensing fee. And honestly, one stakeholder that wasn't mentioned in this conversation tonight is the consumer. So I'm one of those, you are all consumers, and the consumers win big by that dispensing fee coming out. So I wanted to say that. And then just protecting the opportunity to come back. We do have some questions. There's still some regulatory fine-tuning and relooking and studying what's in the -3. So thank you again for making it better, and we know we have a lot more problem solving to do and committed to doing that. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you. Chair Knows and members of the committee, for the record, my name is Kelsey Wilson. I'm here today on behalf of Pharmaceutical Care Management Association, PCMA, where the national trade association for America's pharmacy benefit managers, or PBMs. I want to thank you for the opportunity to testify tonight on House Bill 4149, and I am going to keep my testimony limited to the -3 amendment that Representative Nathanson did share with us earlier this afternoon. I do also want to start by thanking Reps. Nathanson, Goodwin, and you, Chair Knows, for the ongoing dialogue around these issues in this bill. We are grateful for the decision to remove the provisions related to mandating minimum dispensing fees and the inclusion of self-insured plans. That said, the amendment is under review with my member companies, and in initial feedback I'm receiving, there remain a few concerns, including parts of the bills that we still believe will significantly increase prescription drug costs and impact plan benefit design offerings. Recognizing the constraints of time, we're working as quickly as we're working as quickly as possible to complete the analysis and provide recommendations for addressing these, what we, what I hope are minimal issues. Again, we remain amenable to focusing on policies that transition PBM registration to licensure and the 340B nondiscrimination Language. We do intend to provide some technical changes we'd like to see addressed. We're committed to developing the constructive feedback and viable language alternatives. Our objective is to contribute to a legislative framework that balances cost containment with maintaining high standards of care and access. We'll provide detailed recommendations and proposed language as quickly as possible. Thanks for the opportunity.
Chair Knows, members of the committee, for the record, Fon Berry, representing Moda Health. First of all, I want to thank the sponsors as well, Representative Goodwin and Representative Nathanson. Obviously, this bill is a lot different from where it started, and we appreciate the, the recognition that there were challenges with the, the way that it was drafted. I think that the one concern that I want to raise is we do still have some challenges with Section 13 of the bill. That is the section that opens up contracting for pharmacies to essentially any willing pharmacy. For Moda and our work with OEB specifically, our concern is not just around the savings that we have from specialty pharmacies and the care that they're able to deliver for medication that is high cost and potentially high, has, has a lot of needs. The patients need to be able to make sure that they're receiving it in the right way and that they're aware of what they need to do. But I also just want to point out that we often use networks in order to save costs for consumers. So we might contract with one chain pharmacy, but not another chain pharmacy. And one chain pharmacy will give us a discount because of that. And for OEB specifically, that money goes through and ultimately gets to the members, and it saves money across the system for them. So I just want to, we are happy to have this conversation more in the interim. I would encourage the committee just to think about some others in the supply chain. We keep talking about the small number of PBMs. There are only three wholesalers. Some of the conversations that we have heard over the past, you know, couple of months around these issues are issues driven by the contracts that PSAOs negotiate for the pharmacies with PBMs. And so there are others in the supply chain that don't have a lot of insight into what their contracting practices look like or what their kind of take-home is on those different types of contracts. And I would just urge the committee to think about that as we move forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Committee. Chair is closing the public hearing on House Bill 4149. I want to thank you all for your endurance and your willingness to serve and listen about all these different things. We have a lot to try to get decided here amongst ourselves and then ultimately with our colleagues and with the public in the next few days. Tomorrow, we're going to hear three other bills that also have, frankly, complications or interesting issues for us to discern. And then on Monday, we're going to have, I hope, just a bevy of work sessions with tons of amendments. So you have between now and the weekend to figure out what you think about everything. I'm hoping that those of you that have amendments are getting them to committee staff so they can get posted so that all of us can examine them and that the public will have an opportunity to weigh in as well and that, that we have enough time, if just for some reason an amendment is not drafted correctly, that we still could get it together and meet the first chamber deadline. So with that, I will see you all back here tomorrow at 3:00 in the afternoon. I know you can't wait. And the meeting is adjourned.
Give him two minutes.